Members of the public, welcome to this virtual meeting of the Strategic Planning Board. Planning Board. I am councillor Mike Hunter, your chairman for today's meeting, but I will, councillor Gardner will be taking over from me as I will have to leave the meeting for a personal matter. I'm very sorry. I will begin by explaining some of the ground rules for those taking part in the meeting to follow. Please can you keep your camera and microphone switched off unless I invite you to speak. This is to ensure that only one voice can be heard at a time, talking without interruption. This also helps to avoid feedback and background noise and save bandwidth. For members of the board wishing to speak during the debate or raise a procedural point, please indicate your desire to do so by using the chat facility, which can be accessed via the information bar near the centre of your display. Present at today's meeting are members of the Strategic Planning Board, and I intend to call their name one by one and ask them to switch on their camera and microphone to introduce themselves and confirm they can hear the proceedings, starting with councillor Edgar.
Thank you Chair, I can see and hear, thank you.
Councillor Ashley Farrell.
Hello Chair, yeah, I can see and hear you.
Thank you very much Ashley. Councillor Stuart Gardner.
I can see and hear you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you Stuart. Councillor Peter Groves.
Thank you Chair, I can see and hear you.
Thank you. Councillor David Jeffrey.
Thanks Chair, yes, I can see and hear you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Steve Ogben.
I can see and hear you Chair, can you see me?
I certainly can. Councillor Patrick Redstone.
I can see and hear you Chair.
Thank you very much councillor. Councillor Jackie Weatherill.
I can see and hear you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you Jackie. And councillor Phil Williams.
I can both see and hear, thank you very much Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Williams.
Sorry Chairman to interrupt it Sarah, just ask councillor Unik if you could just take your camera off until it's your opportunity to speak, thank you very much, sorry about that Chair.
Thank you. Also present are the following officers who are here to advise the board regarding the applications on the agenda. They are Sarah Baxter, Democratic Services Officer, Sheila Dillon, planning lawyer, Daniel Evans, Principal Planning Officer, Tom Evans, neighbourhood planning manager, Paul Herdis, highways officer, Peter Hooley, enforcement manager, David Malcolm, acting head of planning, Jeremy Owens, development planning manager. And I will now explain how the board will operate. The planning officer will introduce the application, show slides, photographs and plans regarding the site. I will then invite any registered public speakers to address the committee and ask them to switch on their camera and microphone, state the name of the group they are representing. I will inform them how much time they have to speak and that they must finish within this time or their microphones may be muted to enable the meeting to move along. If anything the public speaker has said was unclear, I may allow members to question to ask questions of clarification. Once they have spoken, the public speakers will turn off their camera and microphone and listen to the rest of the debate and decision. The planning officer will respond to any issues raised by the public speaker and then members will be able to ask the planning officer questions before moving to debate the application. I remind members to indicate in the chat function if they wish to speak during the debate. When the debate moves to a close, I will check whether the officers have any final advice to give and that the terms of the resolution, which will have been moved and seconded are all clear. I will then invite each member of the board in alphabetical order to turn on their camera and microphone and confirm their support for the resolution or otherwise by stating for, against or not voting. The result of the vote will be reported to the meeting. Members of the board can only participate in a vote on the application if they can hear and be heard throughout. If a member loses their connection and is able to alert us to this fact, the meeting may be able to adjourn for a short period to allow them to reconnect. If they are unable to connect within a short time, the meeting will continue without them and they will be unable to participate in or vote on the application. If the live stream to the meeting fails, the meeting will be adjourned for a reasonable length of time to try and restore the connection. If this is not possible to do, the meeting will be postponed for a new date. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and streamed live to the public. We now move to agenda item one.
Yes Chairman, just to let you know that councillor Critchley has actually now made it into the meeting, so perhaps we could just check his technology and councillor Morton I don't think was read out, so if you could just check his technology as well.
Okay dokey, so councillor Critchley, can you see and hear us, if you can switch your camera on and speak?
Yeah, I can see and hear.
Thank you very much. I see the return of the beard there councillor Critchley.
Yeah, it's necessary I think.
Councillor Morton, I believe I missed you when I read that out.
Yeah, I did.
I really don't know how that can happen, missing you out mate, I really don't, I apologize for that.
So no apologies then.
Thank you very much, so we have a full meeting, right. Thanks very much councillor Morton, I do apologize. We now move on to agenda item number one, which is apologies for absence, which there are none. Item two, declarations of interest. So councillor Ogben.
It's my usual declaration as a non-executive director of ANSA. And it's item five, which is the 17/6366C. ANSA was a consul T, but I've played no part in that and so forth, the usual wording, Sarah, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Edgar, thank you councillor Ogben.
Thank you Chair, as chairman of the Public Rights of Way Committee, items five and six have had consultation, but I've not been involved in the discussions and I'm open minded on them, thank you.
Councillor Jeffrey.
Thanks Chair, just for transparency, and I think other members of the committee may have received one, but it was just an email from Lexington Communications over the former Albion Chemical Works. It was just a marketing thing I think and I've not entered into any communication with them and I'm not predetermined.
Thank you very much. Councillor Williams.
Yes, I won't be participating on the panel for item six, but I will be speaking as a ward councillor. And I also received the email that councillor Jeffrey's mentioned, but I haven't entered into any correspondence with the centres.
Thank you very much councillor Williams.
Sorry Chairman, can I just clarify with councillor Williams, is that because you have a predetermination that you're not speaking on, you're not taking part in the debate?
Yes it is, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patrick, oh sorry, Peter Groves, Stuart Gardner, so if we go to councillor Gardner first?
Just to say, Mr Chairman, I similarly had the email from Lexington. I did respond, but only to advise them that I couldn't communicate with them because of my position on this board and I copied my correspondence to the borough solicitors officer, Mrs Dillon, so there we are, just for clarity.
Thank you very much councillor Gardner. Councillor Groves.
I'm in exactly the same position as my colleagues, I also received the communication from Lexington Communications. I didn't respond to them and that's the end of the matter.
Yeah, I think it might be that we do a blanket one for that because I received that as well, but I didn't respond, so councillor Redstone.
The same as councillor Groves.
Thank you very much councillor Redstone. And councillor Farrell has also received that email, I'm presuming that the whole board received the email. So if we do a blanket declaration on that one, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just note that councillor Gardner did respond just to say he couldn't communicate any further, thank you.
Now, I'd like to declare, same as councillor Ogben, as a non-executive director of ANSA, I'm also ward member for item number five, but I am not predetermined, so. If you got that down, there we go. Right, thank you very much. So we now move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. If we have somebody that would like to propose the minutes? Thank you councillor Edgar, councillor Edgar will propose. Do we have a seconder? Councillor Ogben.
Thank you Chair, I'd formally like to propose the minutes as read, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Ogben.
Just seconding, that's all.
Thank you very much. Before we move to the vote, we just have councillor Gardner wishes to speak.
It's merely a point of clarification, in the item relating to declarations for interest, just for interest, the spelling of the company that were the agents, just in case they get a bit iffy about it, the Wilmore is W-I-L-L-M-O-R-E, just for clarification, I just thought, given that it's there, it's incorrectly spelt, that's the only correction I have, otherwise I'm happy to accept the minutes.
Thank you very much councillor Gardner. Now, we will go to the vote, so if you can, if we go alphabetically and if you can state against or not voting or support. So for, against or not voting, and we start with councillor Edgar.
For.
Councillor Farrell. Or councillor Gardner. For councillor Groves.
Not voting Chair, as I said my apologies for the meeting.
Councillor Ogben. Or councillor Jeffrey. Or councillor Morton. Or councillor Redstone. Four. Councillor Weatherill.
Four, four.
Thank you. Councillor Williams. Four. Councillor Critchley.
Not voting Chair, I had to leave early.
Thank you very much. And councillor I'll vote for. That vote is carried, thank you very much. Right, item four sets out the public speaking rules for this committee. We will now move to the first application, which is item five, 17/6366C, outline proposal for a mixed use development including residential, cafe, marina and other ancillary works. Intertechnic UK Limited, Road Beta, Middlewich, for Mr Peter Nun. Can I now ask Daniel Evans to present the application please?
Thank you Chairman, I'll just share the presentation. Okay, so this application relates to a site known as Intertechnic, which is off Road Beta in Middlewich. It's a site within the settlement boundary, you've got the location plan on the screen. It's a T-shaped site basically, forming two existing buildings, which are the grey areas and then there's quite large areas of surrounding hard standing, which is used for parking of vehicles. Site is to the north and to the east is relatively industrial in nature. This is Road Beta, which you can see, running to the eastern boundary of the site. To the west, you've got the canal, which is along here. And then beyond the canal, you've got Bouver Lane. The canal includes a conservation area and a number of listed structures, so bridges and locks largely along the canal. This is the aerial photograph of the site, so you can see the surrounding industrial land and the canal. I should mention as well, to the south of the site is a local nature reserve, which is just in here and there is a public right of way running along Road Beta, but you can see the surrounding context there, largely industrial on this side of the canal and residential on the opposite side. These are some photographs of the site, so this is looking from Road Beta, so you can see this is the site in here behind this Palisade fencing. This is looking further, this is the site just beyond here, so this is Road Beta, you're looking in a southern direction and this is the concrete depot next door. And that's looking in the opposite direction along Road Beta, so that's looking north. In that direction, that was a concrete site I mentioned, the application site is just over here. So these are the existing buildings within the site, so you can see the very utilitarian industrial type buildings and you can see largely the site is hard standing and parked cars. That's looking west across the site towards the canal, which is just beyond this line of trees. And this is taken from the west of the site, so this is standing on the opposite side of a canal. The application site is beyond this line, these trees here. So that's looking south towards Sandwatch and that's looking in the opposite direction, that's King's Lock, so there's a public house, a little bridge, the lock is listed and the application site is just off the photograph in this direction. So you can see within the officer report, the site's former part of LPS 43, which is a site at Brookslane, Middlewich, which has been allocated for development through a master plan led approach within the Cheshire East Local Plan. We now have the Brookslane SPD, which has been adopted and as a material consideration for the determination of this planning application. I've got two plans on screen, so these are the illustrative master plans taken from the SPD master plan. So the one on the left shows you the wider Brookslane site. The application site we've got today is somewhere in here. So this is a shorter term opportunity and then there's much longer term opportunities to the north. And that's a more close up of the short term opportunity, so the application site is basically in here. These are the plans we've got submitted, so what's proposed, it's an outline application with access to be determined, all other matters are reserved and it's for 114 dwellings, that includes 16 retirement apartments and the application has been reduced from 137 dwellings during the course of the application. There's an 18 berth marina proposed within the development and development heights would range from two to three storeys. That's another plan just showing you the amount of the green space within the development and that's a more detailed typology, but as all matters are reserved, it's best to look at this plan here. So in terms of this application, the principle of development is considered to be acceptable and it meets with the allocation within LPS 43. There will be need to be further work at reserve matters stage in terms of parking layout, design, connections, landscaping, street design and things like that, but they all can be dealt with at reserve matters stage. There's policy compliant level of affordable housing and the application has potential to bring extensive improvements to the canal conservation area. Impacts in terms of education and healthcare can be mitigated and there's not going to do any impact in terms of residential amenity, trees or ecology. The main issue we've got, and you can see discussed in the report, is in terms of noise. However, the view has taken that the site is going to be subject to change in the future as wider development is brought forward. We give significant weight to the compliance with the SPD and LPS 43 and the impact upon these can be considered at reserve matters stage. So you can see within the report, the application is recommended for approval. I've just got a verbal update for members on this application. So within the section 106 heads of terms, we've now had a consultation back from the NHS who are requesting a contribution of £95,616, so that would need to be included within the section 106 head of terms and it's suggested that 50% is secured prior to occupation and 50% prior to the occupation of the 50th dwelling. And I've just got some minor amendments to some of the conditions. So condition three, we just clarify, which is a standard outline condition, that the reserve matters application shall include details of noise mitigation and acoustic assessments as referred to in conditions 21 and 22. And we've got two additional conditions, number 34, which would restrict occupancy of retirement departments to the over 55s and then condition 35, which will be for the first reserve matters application to include details of a NEAP with eight pieces of equipment and a 30 metre separation distance to the nearest dwellings. So, subject to those changes Chairman, it's recommended for approval.
Thank you very much, Mr Evans. Right, we'll move to the first speaker, which is Taslim Shazad and would you like to speak to the board please?
Can you hear me?
I certainly can, I do hope I pronounced your name correctly, if I haven't, I do apologize.
It's a difficult one anyway. And thank you Chairman. My name's Taslim Shazad and I'm from Delicious Meals, we were purchasing Rockford next to Technic. So I'm here today mainly, it's not really an objection, it's more of a concern that could lead to an objection. I've noted behind the yard of what we're purchasing, there's going to be retirement homes and in front of this yard, there's going to be apartments. We're going to have constant deliveries coming in and out. And if the plans were to pass and completed, would this be a problem for the running of the business and problem to the residents as a noise problem from forklifts? And also, would we be still free to operate till late because we do? And although, sorry, go on.
No, 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 sorry, I thought you'd finished, so we just carry on.
Although the roads in front of Technic is owned by Rockford, so it would be owned by us once the purchase is completed. If the plans are passed, would the construction cause blockages in the road causing obstruction, you know, to the businesses opposite us and ourself as well? And lastly, the character of the location, as residence being built amongst industrial businesses, would this have a detrimental effect on the valuation of both the residence and our units? And really that was the main concern, the main concern is if I'm purchasing something at such a big price, would this affect my business?
Thank you very much. Have you concluded Taslim?
Yes, really, yes, thank you.
Very much. Well, I will ask, does anybody wish to ask questions of Taslim? No, then I will ask Mr Evans if he wishes to come back and speak to the concerns that Taslim has.
Okay, so there was three main points. In terms of the first point, clearly this application site is part of a wider allocation within the Cheshire East Local Plan. Within that allocation, clearly it allocates this site for a residential led approach. And we're speculating here because there's no, potentially there's no change in ownership at the moment and the impact from employment uses on the adjacent sites could be considered at reserve matters stage. We don't know what kind of use might be in an adjacent building. All we're suggesting within the officer report is the matter can be dealt with at the reserve matters stage. So it's difficult to say when we've got no details of what may be happening on an adjacent site. In terms of the impact on property values, that's not something we consider as possibly a planning application. And then the final point seemed to relate to deliveries being hampered during the construction phase along Road Beta. Again, we've got, I think there's a condition for a construction management plan within the recommendation, so that shouldn't be an issue. And, or see if we can try and find, oh yeah, so condition 31 relates to a construction traffic management plan to be submitted and approved, so I think that covers the points really.
Yeah, thank you very much, there was one other point there actually, Mr Evans, if you could just clarify the position on that, which I think is a very important one for Taslim, is obviously your operating hours are till late at the minute. What happens when these houses go up and will they have any standing to put pressure on the council to reduce their working hours? Because obviously this is an existing business.
From a, in response, from a planning point of view, we're unable to, there may be restrictions on that site at the moment, which they need to adhere to, but if not, we can't impose restrictions on hours of operation on an adjacent site as part of this application or retrospectively. So they'd have to just adhere to what the current restrictions are. If the site was brought forward for employment, the adjacent site was brought forward for employment uses and there were complaints caused by this development, it would be necessary for, the issue would be resolved, I imagine, by environmental health.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think what Taslim was saying was that at the moment, their business works till late in the evening. Will she still be able to work, will their operating hours still be able to be late in the evening?
From a planning point of view, we can't change what the, any hours of operation on an adjacent site. So they'd have to operate within any planning permission for the adjacent site and we can't impose any restrictions. But clearly if there is any nuisance caused, if this site is built out as residential and the adjacent site is in employment use, if there is a conflict in terms of noise, the matter will have to be dealt with by environmental health.
Okay, thank you very much. Taslim, thank you very much, if you would like to switch your mic off and if you would like to listen to the rest of the debate.
I too, thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, do we have any questions? So we have councillor Ogben.
Thank you Chairman, it relates to that last point. Because obviously in considering this outline application, we have to be mindful of the living conditions of future residents, don't we? Now, I have no idea what of the working hours of the adjacent site or how noisy otherwise it is, but we do have, what we are looking at is the potential construction in the future of housing on this site. And quite frankly, I'm a bit anxious that the planning officer comments that, well, if there's a noise problem, it will be an environmental health issue, I think that's just storing up a possible issue for the future. Is it possible within the conditions that there's some reference to suitable noise attenuation measures as necessary? Because... Because, uh, you know, this isn't, it's sort of in an, in an industrial type of area, is it not, Chair? Um, so that's something that needs to be taken into account. I would say obviously the detail at reserve matters stage, um, but otherwise, we, you know, we have a housing estate with elderly people living there and all the rest of it and, and, and normal house and housing for other people. Um, and what we don't want to see is, is as soon as it starts, um, that there's complaints from the residents. It's only too familiar that you get this. So could, could the planning officer just kindly comment on that? Is noise attenuation, for example, something that can be considered for reserve matters and, and somehow conditioned into this? Thank you, Chair.
Mr Evans?
Yeah, so in response to councillor Hogburn, clearly we're in a position, um, that there may be a, a, a new occupant on an adjacent site, uh, but there also may not. We don't have any details of what, 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 how their business will operate or what their business is. In terms of this, this current application, how we've assessed the application is that, um, clearly the wider area is subject to a master plan and, uh, there's a, an aspiration with the local plan that it will all be brought forward for, um, a largely, well, a mixed use, but largely residential, um, development. Clearly, we, we don't know what will happen with the adjacent sites. Um, and if, if they come forward for residential purposes, that the, the requirements for any noise mitigation, uh, would actually change. So yes, in response to councillor Hogburn's point, what we are suggesting in the conditions, um, as I've already referred, as I referred to earlier, is conditions twenty-one and twenty-two. So, um, number twenty-one requires at reserve matters stage, uh, an updated noise assessment to be, uh, undertaken. And that, that will, um, assess the impact of noise at that time because the position may change by the time we get a reserve matters application in. Um, and then condition twenty-two will, uh, is the noise mitigation scheme. So the reserve matters application will include a noise mitigation scheme, which may be in the form of glazing, fencing, uh, what have you, but it, it's covered within those two conditions.
All right, thank you, Chair. I think that probably answers my concerns at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Jeffrey.
Thanks, Chair. Um, couple of questions to Mr Evans. Um, firstly, I, I recall when we were looking at the, um, the master plan, the supplementary planning document, the only change we made was the number of births. So I was just on the marina. So I was just wondering whether the, um, the number of births, is that a, a detail or is that specified, the outline? Are, are we setting it in stone at this point? Um, secondly, I think that there was an objection from THCL, I think it was, um, that it doesn't comply with one eighty and one eight-two paragraphs of the NPPF. Um, I think one eighty is okay, but I think there was a bit, um, one eight-two wasn't really addressed properly, I don't think. Just, uh, could, could Mr Evans comment on that, please?
Yeah, sure, I'll just get the MPP off, while I'm speaking. Hopefully you can still see and hear me. Um, in terms of the, um, marina, um, what the committee resolution from the last strategic planning board does is change, um, the, the number of births within the marina. Um, so I think it was circa, um, twenty births previously, um, and now it's been changed to up to fifty births. Um, so this application itself, um, has during the course of the application been increased from twelve to eighteen. Um, clearly it is below, um, the, um, fifty births, um, referred to in the previous, uh, SPV resolution. Uh, but in, in my view, it, although it's below, it still complies with the, um, SPD and that it's, it refers to up to, um, um, it, it basically gives a, it gives a ceiling rather than a, uh, a requirement for a certain number. So in my view, um, the development complies with the SPD. Um, in terms of the MPPF, um, spare with me a second, was it paragraph one eight-two?
Yeah, I think the objection was one eighty and one eight-two. So I think from memory, uh, one eighty was, um, noise or something, I think.
Quality. Oh no, sorry. That's one eight-one, one eighty, um, yeah, it's noise, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I think, I think that's dealt with in, in your report.
Yeah.
And one eight-two, uh, let me pull it up. I think it was more generically how it fits in with surrounding businesses. Um, and it, it wasn't really dealt with explicitly in, in your report.
Yeah, I think in, in terms of that point, um, the issue has been resolved because it refers to planning policies. So the, the issue in terms of the allocation, um, was, uh, known when the, the site was allocated. So the, the site has been through, um, when allocated as part of the Cheshire East Local Plan, has been through consultation and it's been through examination by an inspector. And the planning policy has now allocated, um, uh, this site for a master plan-led approach, um, as part of LPS forty-three. So in my view, it's, it's been dealt with, uh, by the, um, Cheshire East Local Plan, um, strategy when it, when it allocated, um, uh, the site.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Councillor Gardner.
Um, Mr Evans, I've got a question relating to the conservation area, um, and whether or not, um, the existing, um, obviously we're hoping that the proposal will, um, positively enhance the conservation area. Um, but is it, is it okay to approve a reserve ma, an application of, uh, in outline stage like this without the details of, of what's going to replace it? Um, can I be assured that the, uh, and, and existing buildings can't be demolished until they've got permission for the, the, uh, reserve matters is fully approved? Um, I similarly have an issue regarding the number of, um, parking births. I understand what you've just said, but, um, if you were, um, aware of the debate that took place, um, of this board at the previous meeting, when we were considering the supplementary planning document, you will be aware that, um, most of the, uh, reasoning for us increasing the number was we felt that the twenty had been, um, basically a failure to recognise the potential, um, of this site to increase and improve the, um, facilities for canal users, um, and to enhance the, um, potential, uh, for the economy of Middlewich from that application. Now, clearly, uh, while, and I, I did point this out to you yesterday, the draw, the indicative drawing only shows sixteen births, not eighteen, which is what you're referring to. But that aside, eighteen births relative to twenty is in the same ballpark. But if you are talking about eighteen relative to fifty, there's a significant under provision. And while I don't believe that we're in a position today to refuse this application on that ground, um, I would hope that we could certainly indicate to the applicants that, uh, we would expect them to be, um, a little bit more ambitious in what they're providing in terms of a, um, marina on this site, uh, rather than merely relocating, uh, births that are currently, uh, located along the canal path. So, um, perhaps you could address both of those points for me. Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, in terms of the conservation area, um, I'll get the, um, hold on, can I just share the screen one second, just to beat out the conservation area boundary? Hopefully you can all see that. Um, so yeah, the conservation area, um, it's quite unusual that, that it's quite linear and it's, uh, as it follows the canal, but for some reason within, when it comes into this site, it extends out into this area here. Um, I'm, I'd have to double check, but I'm pretty sure that the buildings themselves, um, are actually outside the conservation area. Um, but there is a, a tree belt along the conservation area boundary, which you, you can see on, on the photographs, so in here. Um, so larger than the conservation area, it's, um, that this tree belt and the areas of hard standing. Um, from a conservation area point of view, we've got no concern about the demolition of the existing buildings on the site, that they're not, um, they're very utilitarian, that, that they've offered no value to the conservation area. Um, and this development would open up this boundary, um, and has got the potential, um, to provide a, a much better relationship. Um, you, you probably note within the report, there are question marks what's going to happen with these trees. Um, we don't know at this stage, uh, because it's largely going to be linked to what remediation is required on the site. Um, so within the officer report, you can see there's a section on contaminated land, um, basically listing, um, um, significant contamination issues on the site and quite a, a number of nasty, um, um, sounding, uh, elements on the site, um, that which is present in the soil and the groundwater. So in order to remediate the site, it may be that, uh, the, the tree cover along this boundary, uh, does get taken out. Um, but again, we don't know at this stage because, um, it will be, uh, resolved when we get the further investigations in terms of contaminated land. So that's covered in the contaminated land section and I think it's also reffened, referenced in the tree section. So, um, although it's adjacent, well, part of the site is within the conservation area, um, I don't think I've got any concern in terms of the, uh, an outline application being determined on this site. Um, we've got a condition, um, that the condition six, that the reserve matters shall be in general accordance with the, the Brooks Lane SPD. Um, and we also have to consider that, that the matters of, um, appearance, scale, um, and landscaping as part of reserve matters where we will, um, make reference to, um, the Cheshire East Design Guide. Um, going back to the, the second point councillor Garner raised, which was about the parking, uh, the marina and the, the number of births for the canal boats. Um, so that's the plan. Um, so, uh, during the course of this application, as I, as I mentioned earlier, it was originally a, a twelve, uh, birth marina, which was set at an angle, um, in, in this direction and here, so you had buildings in, in, in here. Um, we've, as part of the negotiations, they've increased the size of the marina to, um, an eighteen birth, uh, marina, although it's only shown sixteen on the plan, but we could, um, secure the required details at reserve matter stage. Um, I just, we've not had the discussion with the applicant since, um, the, uh, previous SPB resolution about increasing the number of births from, uh, to, to, to up to fifty. However, I imagine it's going to be, um, it's unlikely to be something which, um, they would, um, be amenable to, um, basically because the, the costs associated with the marina, uh, and the amount of land it would take, um, I imagine what they'll say is it's, it, it raises all kinds of viability issues, um, associated with this development, but I haven't, I haven't actually asked, asked the question since the, the previous SPB, um, resolution.
Okay. Councillor Gardner, you want to come back?
No, I'll leave that for the debate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else with any questions? No, I just have a cou, uh, councillor Williams.
Yep, can, can I just say, um, I can see the comments, I can't reply to them for some reason, the, the comment, the meeting chat is, looks different to what it normally does. I don't know whether it's something I've done or whether it's a bandwidth issue or what, but I am concerned about my ability to take part in the debate as a result of that. So I'm wondering whether it's possible for me to use the hand raised facility if I want to comment on any of the, uh, discussions that we're having. I have no questions on this particular one, but I just thought I'd raise it at this point. Cause I, and I have had a personal, um, um, message from Sarah, which I haven't been able to reply to either, but I can address that later on.
Yeah, that's no problem. We, we, you can use the hand facility, councillor Williams.
Thank you.
Very much. Uh, I have a few questions. Firstly, um, on the highways issue, um, we, we're looking to raise fifty thousand, I believe, towards the junction of Brooks Lane and Led, um, Kinderton Street. Um, we know that we have at the moment somewhere in the region of around half a million pound towards the upgrade of Town Bridge. And we also know that that is not even fifty percent of the costs. Um, and we are now looking at fifty thousand towards a junction improvement there. Is that adequate? And how will that affect the, uh, Town Bridge for one? The next, the next one is, obviously, twen, eighteen of twenty births is, is nearer ninety percent, well, it's eighty odd percent of, um, the number of births compared to the twenty. Now that the SD, SPD has been altered to up to fifty, I don't think that twenty is really adequate and I think questions should be asked. And I wouldn't like to set that in tablets of stone now. Because if it can't be changed and we pass this now, it gives us nowhere to go. Obviously, Middlewich Town Council, um, are using heritage and canals as a major boost to our economy. We have plans in the pipeline, we employ our own heritage officer, we need to make sure that these, as many of these births can be, um, produced as possible. Um, I'm very worried because again, it's a piecemeal development. If we look at the plans that have gone, we have three roads that are truncated into new areas of land, which means that obviously somebody is looking to develop the land either, uh, either side of that development. So why can that, them two areas of land not come forward at the same time, which would make the marina more viable? And if we are leading by a master plan, surely that is something we should do and not be piecemealing.
Okay, so.
Limited, yeah.
Need to respond to those two. In terms of the highways point, um, Mr Hurdis, I'm guessing is online, but just to clarify, the fifty thousand is actually for traffic management measures along Brooks Lane. Um, there's also a sum of three hundred thousand, which is towards the highway improvements at the A fifty-four King Street and Led Smithy Street. So there's actually two contributions, one of three hundred thousand for the junction works and fifty thousand for the traffic management measures, but maybe Mr Hurdis can clarify how it's, it's going to be spent.
Yeah, certainly, Dan. Uh, yeah, morning Chair, morning members. Yeah, I can certainly clarify for that. Just on page forty-six of the agenda there, I think Dan's just referred to it in terms of the highways contribution there. We've got three hundred thousand towards highway improvements, the A fifty-four King Street, Led Smithy Street. So that's the Town Bridge junction in essence, uh, Chair. So, uh, we, we've got a fully costed scheme there, we're ready to go to detailed design. There is a funding gap, but we're not far off getting the full amount of money to enable that scheme to go ahead. And we do believe with this additional money, we will have the funds in place to proceed with that scheme. So we are pretty confident with this additional money will be able to go ahead with that Town Bridge scheme. So we do have quite a substantial other monies already in the pot, ready to go, but there is a bit of a shortfall and we're hoping this will enable that scheme to go ahead. And then the second contribution, as Dan referred to, is the fifty thousand pounds, which is for traffic, to fund traffic management measures along Brooks Lane itself. So there is a pot of money there, uh, there's some ideas, but the detail would need to be worked up in due course if, if the application was approved and the monies were received. So there are two, two separate pots of money there, Chair.
Thank you very much. While you're on then, uh, Mr Hurdis, can I ask the question of the bridge which goes over the canal from Booth Lane?
Yeah.
What's the intention with that bridge? Because that bridge is only, only inadequate to take large amounts of traffic two-way. Um, you can't fit a car and a pedestrian along that bridge. What's the intent of that bridge? You can't fit a car and a pedestrian along that bridge, what's the intent of that bridge?
Well, as you rightly say, it's a one-way operation at the moment, but there is evidence to say that it's actually been abused every day, which I think we all know about, so the discussions have taken based what we can do in relation to what the development is proposed, obviously it's a relatively, in terms of traffic, a relatively smaller development that's been proposed at the moment, so we wouldn't be able to do anything substantial to that bridge, given the development that's been considered at the moment, however, the £50,000 could be used to enforce or do some alterations to the traffic management at the bridge, for example, so it could enforce the one-way operation by various interventions. So the plan is to have a discussion with your local ward member yourself, Chair, and also the parish council, the town council in Middlewicks, in terms of what could potentially done to improve the traffic situation at that bridge. It won't be a new bridge, it won't be anything huge, but there might be some small, say, footwork improvements or some additional signage, just to improve the day-to-day operation of the bridge.
Well, it's very interesting because when you say that there is evidence that this is being abused daily, this is true, it is being abused. So is there a way of stopping cars from going over that bridge? I've noticed there is a bridge in Hool at Chester, where it is a one-way bridge and you can't go over it because there are bollards that go up and down. So if you come over the bridge the way you should, bollards will go down and you can drive over, but if you try to come the other way, the bollards will not move.
That, I know exactly where you're talking about, actually, and there's some other examples of that in Staffordshire. It's an option, they're generally quite expensive to maintain, another option could be flaps, for example, I'm quite a fan of the metal flaps, obviously there is a bit of a noise issue potentially with them, but they do have a very good effect of stopping traffic going the wrong way, like getting car parks sometimes, in and out on car parks. So the various options there, Chair, we can look at, relatively small scale, hence the amount of money that's being asked for it, but I do think the actual detail of what could be done, and given the volume of additional traffic we're talking about from the development, yes, there is an existing issue there, but we're just talking about what would be the impact of this development. With that in mind, I do think the money we could secure from this application, we could actually get a scheme, and I've spoken to our Rob Welsh in our traffic management section, about getting some ideas together, so if this was approved, then we'd obviously take that further forward to detail design and involve local members in that discussion.
That's great, there is one more question on that particular issue, and it might be one for Daniel, is obviously when this estate, if it gets permission and if it is built, then it's going to put a lot more pressure on that one-way system being abused because of people that would have to drive in a complete circle through the Brooks Lane, A54 Junction, and then through Town Bridge Junction. I wonder if we can have a condition where the traffic management system to prevent the abuse of the one-way bridge can be put as a condition within the planning application? Bearing in mind, that is the main feed for the nursery, which is across the, on the left as you come over the bridge.
I mean, there is obviously a traffic regulation order at the moment there, preventing two-way operation on the bridge.
But it does work.
But that is, that is the legal situation at the moment, and people do sometimes ignore that, we do know that, but they shouldn't be doing that. So there is already an order in place, I think it's more about enforcement, and we've talked about a couple of options for enforcement, it could be physical enforcement, or it could be some sort of camera recognition enforcement, or something like that, I think that's maybe a better way to tackle it, rather than a condition on the consent or on any consent, but perhaps Dan might be able to help a bit further on that.
I have to say that I am very, 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 very worried that once this estate starts to be built and starts to be occupied, the pressure of abusing that one-way system and a young mum taking her children to nursery being struck by a car concerns me greatly, and I think it is up to us to make sure that that doesn't happen. At the moment, it seems to be all ifs, buts and maybes, which is no reassurance to the young mums and children that are using that bridge, like I said at the beginning, the bridge is very narrow, you can just about fit a car over it, you can't walk and have a car, there is not enough room. I'm not sure how we intend to enforce what's already been abused, unless it's made as a condition, I mean, we can see in this meeting here now and say, oh, well, we can put a camera up or we can do that, but if it's not made a condition, it won't happen.
But we can secure monies to design a scheme, are you saying that there needs to be a scheme designed already, as it were, to say this is a workable scheme that can be conditioned?
Well, I mean, if that's what it takes, then I'm happy to move deferral of this until a scheme is brought forward that can be made practical and workable and enforceable. I mean, I know we say enforcement and this, that and the other, but we actually have pictures of the police going over the bridge the wrong way. So it's not that easy, is it? And I mean, it needs to be a physical, a physical barrier or a physical form of deterrent, whether that be camera plates or bollards.
Yeah, I mean, obviously it is a longstanding issue, which you know about, Chair, obviously being the local member there, and we know about it in highways, but I think we've just got to proportionate in terms of what we can actually ask this development to do, this is just one part of this site, so I'm assuming other parts may come forward because it's an allocated site, so there will be other opportunities to get potential further monies into this pot, to actually come up with a comprehensive mitigation at the bridge to potentially improve the situation there and provide some footways. It's just, the bridge itself, as you know, is very constrained, it's obviously an old canal bridge there, so there's very limited what we can do with the bridge, it's just trying to prevent the abuse of the one-way system. And I do think the best way of doing it, I don't think we should be too prescriptive at the moment, because we're not quite sure what will work, we need some consultation, you see, as well, because there's some properties, as you'll know, right next to the bridge there, and how will they be serviced, and how will traffic get two-way to them, so it's not an easy situation. I've spoken to our traffic management colleagues on this actual issue very recently, and we did run some potential options through, which we've just gone through, but I didn't want to be too prescriptive for this meeting, I just wanted it left fluid, if possible, to get a sum of money that can be used in consultation with yourself and the town council and the public, to come up with a scheme which will be acceptable, so I don't think we can condition it at the moment, because there isn't a plan to condition, we've got the money to work up a scheme, I just think that's where we are at the moment, Chair, with it.
Money to work up the scheme, is that coming from this development?
Yeah, the money, the £50,000, it says to fund traffic management measures along Brooks Lane, so it is quite fluid, there is quite a lot of wriggle room there, which I think is the best way to do it. I just think that's the best way to do it at the moment, given the relatively small amount of impact this development will have, obviously there's an existing situation, we can't ask a developer to solve an existing situation, because they'd say, well, they should be enforcing the situation, the police should enforce the situation. So we've just got to be a little bit careful what we ask for here, I think the best way to do this is get a sum of money, hopefully they're agreeable to this, and it got approved, then we could sit down collectively, Chair, with yourself, our traffic management colleagues, other representatives, and come up with a relatively small-scale scheme, but I think could be quite effective, I think, I do think that's the best way of doing it, rather than being too prescriptive at this stage and conditioning potential plans that might not actually work in practice.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Mr Evans, the bays.
Yes, so in terms of the bays, clearly we've not asked for 50 bays since the previous, as I mentioned before, since the previous committee resolution in relation to the SPD. But as I said previously, it's, it's not something I imagine they will be looked at too favourably, but it is an option for a discussion, but it might be a very short no, maybe the answer. In terms of the comment you made about being a piecemeal developments, clearly if you have a look at the previous reason for refusal, which is set out in the planning history section, that did refer to the development in isolation being a piece of a former development poorly planned in advance of a master plan led approach, which will determine the precise nature and quantum of development, but we have now got that master plan led approach, and which will help us to, which has given us some idea of the nature and quantum of development. So with the master plan in place, I think we've certainly got some certainty of what we are expecting to see on this development. I suppose the issue we've got is with this wider Brooks Lane site is we've got a number of sites and different ownerships. And this is the first site to come forward, others may follow. And on that basis, it's very difficult, given we have to determine this current application which has been put forward, which is for this one parcel of land, which is owned by a certain party, so that's all I can say really on the matter.
So, so we have three truncated roads, which are obviously going into two parcels of land either side of the development. Do you expect, if this gets permission, for them to come forward with planning applications? And have you had any correspondence verbally or written with these landowners either side of the proposed development?
Personally, I haven't, I know Mr Malcolm has attended meetings, so whether he could, he wants to respond to that point, but clearly this is an outline application, and we could specify within the conditions that the internal road layout is reserved, we're only approving the point of access, if you did have concern about these roads entering into a site which might not come forward.
Right, okay, well I'll ask Mr Malcolm about that in a minute. But what I'm saying is, if these two parcels of land have intimated that they will be putting an application in, then that increases the viability of having a bigger marina. Because if it's a master plan, surely all them areas of land should contribute to the viability of that marina. And by doing it piecemeal, even if we, if they are different landowners, then we will not, the viability of a marina will not be there, let's say. So maybe Mr Malcolm can answer the question as any correspondence, verbally, written, emailed, come from, any other person, people on either side of that development with regards to development if this one becomes, gets passed.
Thanks, Chair. This goes back over a number of years, to be honest, because as you know, this is a site that's been allocated and has been subject to the master plan that we've now got adopted through the SPD, so I've certainly had discussions in the past, but I mean, that is a number of years ago. There is a, I think there was a willingness from adjacent owners to almost see how this application goes and test the water in terms of if this scheme gets an approval, then they, I believe, are likely to come forward with other applications on adjacent sites. But what we've done with the SPD and, well, and in terms of the master plan, is to basically give those future applications the framework to work within. I think picking up the point that I think councillor Garner and yourself have raised, the plans that you had before you are indicative, so I think these concerns that you've, we've got an 18 birth marina indicated on the plans, ultimately we're not precluding a larger marina coming forward. It's just as Daniel's indicated, it's possible whether that actually, whether they will do that, for viability reasons is something that we'll have to deal with as and when, but I mean, it's part and parcel, I mean, those members are familiar with the Congleton, the North Congleton area, huge allocation around the New Link Road that's going in, numerous ownerships, 15 to 20 individual applications that are coming forward, and overall, they are working to a master plan, so this approach is not unusual. And clearly the indications with the indicative plan is that the applicants expect to be able to join in with adjacent sites as they come forward, but we can only judge with what is before us today, and that's what we're doing, and that's why you've got the extra conditions around noise, which Dan's indicated, and actually some of those conditions may disappear, because if other applications come forward, then the noise issues disappear. Well, that was very much the concern when it came to committee previously, was about, well, as an individual application, we have to safeguard this and make sure those relationships in terms of amenity are safeguarded, and that's why we've got the detailed noise condition. So, so there have been discussions, I haven't had anything more recently, and clearly I'm not party to individual ownerships and what they may want to do with their land, that's a freedom of choice, but what we do have is the framework for future applications to work within, and that's what the SPD and the overall master plan does. Hope that helps, Chair.
Well, slightly, I mean, what I will say is that, have we not been proactive with the other landowners to say that this is a master plan area, and it would be more of an advantage for them and us if these plans were all coming in together? That would make certain things more viable, so it would make the contribution towards the highways more viable for the junctions on the 54 and Brooks Lane, it would make more viability for the marina than the size. That would produce a win-win, not for us, but for the town council, for Cheshire East, for the developer, for all concerned, because even the noise acoustics that we'd have to look into, we could perhaps put more to that, rather than getting 106 agreements piecemeal and trying to fill in here, there or where we can, so even the issue with the bridge could be sorted.
That in effect, Chair, is why we have a master plan, so that the, I mean, the developments are not going to come forward in the same way, if we waited for, for example, for Congleton, there's just no way we'd get all of those parties around the table at the same time to say, right, when are you going to submit your applications, and are we going to get all the contributions in? That's why we actually developed a master plan, it's why ultimately why we have a Cheshire East strategy for the whole of the Cheshire East borough, because of the way that we need certain housing requirements, we need employment, et cetera, so the master plan approach and having a framework to enable the design to go forward in a cohesive manner is very much about how we plan and how future strategies are built up. We have discussions with various landowners at various points in the strategic sort of context, because ultimately there's no point in proposing land to come forward if it's never going to come forward, but ultimately we're not in control of land, all we can do is plan and prepare the land to enable those future strategies to be enabled, and that's what this plan does. So we have to determine what's before us, we can't ask other developers to say, you need to bring them on board, if they don't want to, and in this instance, they clearly don't want to, there has been the opportunity in the past for them to join up with this scheme, that clearly hasn't happened. Excuse me, Chair, and as you'll be aware, this application itself has been in for a long time, it's a 17 application because it's been waiting for the, sort of the SPD and the master plan to be formed, so we just have to make a decision on this application. If that's a specific concern when it gets to the debate that members wish to push on, then that's something that they will need to consider, but it's perfectly acceptable in principle for an individual application to be submitted as this one is, as part of an overall framework.
Thank you very much. I mean, I would make my next comments for debate, so if there are no more questions, councillor Garner.
Sorry, this is a very short question. When my attention was drawn to the issue relating to highway contributions, my eye caught the plan on the opposite page 47, and I note that there, on that plan, and I normally accept it's only a location plan, I see two buildings, or the outline of what I assume to be buildings, on the site, the first one is a small building, completely within the site boundary, the second one is a much larger building, which is partly in this site and partly on the adjacent land. And when I look at the plan, the indicative layout plan, I note that the same outline is shown on the adjacent land as Rockford, Stone and Slate, I'm seeking clarification as to whether or not this building is still in situ, and I'd like to know how we propose that the scheme as presented today would come forward when part of a building would need to be demolished, and whether there's an appropriate condition to ensure that the side wall of the remaining part of the building is retained, or whether we have some assurances that the entire building is to be demolished as part of the project, in which case it should form part of this application site.
Mr Evans?
Yeah, so in terms of Rockford Slate, that is the building which is basically adjoint to the Intertentate Building, last time I visited the site, it was in place, and I don't believe it's been demolished, so it's outside the red edge, and there's no intention for the Rockford Slate building to be um, and there's no intention for the Rockford Slate building to be demolished as part of this application. So if, if we did get down the route of an approval, um, clearly they would, um, need to be some kind of agreement between the two parties in terms of, um, work to, um, the adjoining building. Um, and it may be that we attach an additional condition for, um, um, any, um, measures to, um, deal with the reconstruction of, um, that side elevation of Rockford Stone.
So you're confirming that it is one building at the moment, although it's in two ownerships and set internally separated?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Uh, any more questions?
Chair, sorry Chair, can I just, just, it just struck me when you mentioned the Rockford, um, Slate site, um, and my comments about hadn't had any previous discussions of recent times. Um, if I recall, I think they, they did offer a letter of support for the application. Um, but to be honest, I think that's some time ago. Um, so that might, it just struck me when councillor Gardner raised the issue about the building sort of almost being subdivided. Um, I think that's been done with full knowledge of, 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 of the Rockford Slate, um, owners. So that might explain why we've got this sort of slightly unusual circumstance that appears that we've got a building that's going to be, um, sort of halved, if you like. So, um, I, I can't recall where, where, um, and when that was. It might have been on the previous application, but it was just for, for, for completeness really, Chair. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Redstone?
Um, I'm, I'm just seeking clarification. Did I understand the, um, officer correctly when he said that the, there was going to be an age limit on occupation of these sites, 55 and above? Is that so?
Yes. So within the application, uh, councillor, uh, um, there are 100, a total of 114 dwellings. Of those 114, 16 are proposed as retirement apartments. Um, so on the, um, submitted plan, I'll, if you want me to get that off. That would mean, um, I'll just share my screen again just to point it out.
Thank you.
Basically red blocks which are shown as, uh, the retirement apartments. Um, so what we're suggesting is a condition to restrict those, the occupancy of those buildings to be over 55s. Uh, the reason for that is that when we've calculated the education, um, contributions, um, we've only, um, we've based that on, uh, we've excluded the retirement apartments, uh, given that, um, they usually, uh, they won't be having, they won't be, uh, have young children attending schools. Um, so that's the reason for the condition. Um, just if they, if they were for, for anybody to occupy, we'd expect a, a much larger, um, education contribution.
The, the other part, you've answered about the education, um, element. But the other thing is that occurs to me that those are on the most noisy part of the site and those people are likely to be in their premise, their, um, dwellings most of the day. Because obviously they're retired.
Yeah, well, it's, it's purely an indicative plan. Um, so they may be elsewhere on the development. We, we, we just don't know because, um, we will, we'll get details of the, the layout and, um, where the retirement will be, apartments will be cited at the reserve matter stage.
And, and the other element is the economic value of this site to the town. Um, but generated, income generated through tourism, I suppose, by the, the, the connection with the canal and the, um, the, the births for the boats. Has there been an assessment of how much that is likely to generate? And how many, what, what the relationship is between the number of boats provided by the development and its economic value to the town?
The short answer is no. Um.
But, but isn't that one of the justifications for having this development?
Well, the justification for the development itself is, um, we've got this allocation within the Cheshire East local plan for a mixed use largely residential led scheme on the site, which would include a, uh, a marina. Um, and clearly, um, in any view, a larger marina would provide a greater economic benefits. Um, but as I said previously, my view is we've still got a marina which meets the requirement for up to 50 births. It's 18. Um, and I don't think we, um, can insist that we, we have additional, uh, births on, on this development. Um, so although there will be some economic benefits from what's proposed, but clearly we just don't have the numbers.
Right, thank you.
Right, thank you very much. If there's no more questions, I plan to move into the debate.
So Chair, sorry Chairman, one of the speakers keeps indicating the wish to speak. Can you just confirm that that opportunity is now passed?
Yes, I'm very sorry. Um, you've had your, um, allocated time to speak. I am very sorry, but the rules of debate, uh, the rules of the committee will not allow us to bring, uh, speakers back in. I am very sorry about that. Um, right, so I do intend to move to debate. Who wishes to start the debate? No one? Okay. Well, I, 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 overall, I do, I'm, I'm not totally against this application. What I am against, uh, at the minute, which is confusing me, is the fact that the, um, SDP document, um, was changed to up to 50 bays for the births of the canal. So that's 25 bays, 50 births. That's how it normally works, two, two, two boats to a birth. But I am very concerned that the officers are, A, predetermining what the developer will say and also um, deciding that they don't want to ask the question because they think they know the answer. As far as I'm concerned, I think that we should be deferring the plan and getting some of these questions answered, as in to the bridge, the births. I think they're very important to, to the town council and to the residents of the town. Um, I reserve the right to continue, but councillor Gardner?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it's your ward. You have the best knowledge of, of this area. Um, I am, uh, concerned that this proposal is premature. Um, I hear that the application has been with the council since 2017. Um, and in light of the earlier, um, refusal on this site, I'm somewhat amused as to why this application was not refused on the grounds of its prematurity. Um, at that time, we're now three years on, um, maybe slightly short. I don't know when the application was submitted. Um, but the reality is that that has given, that, that, given that the work that was being undertaken by, um, officers i- in other parts of the council to develop a, um, strategic planning document to relate to the site because of its importance, not just in terms of housing development, but also in providing a facility for, um, canal users and encouraging uh, people to visit Middlewich, which is something I think as a council we should be doing. Um, I had the, um, the, the, the benefit of, of visiting Middlewich when I was the mayor of Nutzford on a couple of occasions and, uh, um, I've always been surprised at the hidden gems that lie behind, um, the roads that we travel on, which are always unfortunately congested these days. Um, and I think that the opportu- the opportunities for this site are being lost. The point you made, Mr. Chairman, earlier on regarding the viability of the site, um, and the, um, issues not only with regard to the marina, but also with regard to highway developments. Um, with regard to highway development, it's possible that, um, our officers could secure additional funding through piecemeal um, developments. But if this is the site on which the marina will be provided, then I would, um, expect that the developers would rightly say, um, it is taking too much of the site. It makes the site, um, unviable and therefore we can only provide you with 18 spaces. At a push, we might get 20. Clearly a greater land take would be required to provide up to 50. And I think that that might be, um, a legitimate reason for, um, actually refusing this application on its prematurity. Because if the site were larger, then the capacity to lose some of the site, um, from, uh, build development to marina, uh, would improve because you would be, um, incre- reducing the proportion of the site which is being lost to non, um, housing uses. So I think from that point of view, um, I am, uh, minded not to accept this in its current form. And if we were to accept it, I would like there to be a clear indication that notwithstanding the submission of the indicative layout, we are not accepting that only 18 spaces can be provided for the, um, marina. We are not accepting the location of the older person's accommodation. And that we are not accepting what is clearly a, um, very poor attempt by the developer to show connectivity to the adjoining land. Because actually we can't establish that those positions of roads are actually appropriate until we see how it links in with the adjoining sites. And if we were to approve this layout, and I accept it's only indicative, but if we were to improve this layout or give tacit approval for it by not saying we do not accept that that layout is acceptable, we could actually be blighting the adjoining sites, which is not what the planning process is there for, and actually failing to deliver what is required by the supplementary planning document. So I will listen to what others have to say, but at this moment I am not minded to support the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Gardner. Councillor Hubbard?
Follow that, as the man says. Um, I suppose I've just got one question. And this is to perhaps one of the ward councillors, Sir Chairman, um, or even somebody else might know better. The, um, is this the only place where a marina can be provided? That's a simple question. Is this the only location? Um, that's one question. Um, linked with it, if it were the only location, is it at all, is it even, is it slightly conceivable that some adjacent site, uh, might actually be able to supplement the, uh, the number of births that's, that's indicated on this, this plan? So I'm, I'm really sort of majoring, if you like, on the, this whole issue of the, the marina, which is the item that was, we, we touched on only at the last meeting. And to be fair for the, on the applicant, I suppose, and anybody else, uh, involved in the area. Uh, it's only a couple of weeks since that supplementary planning document was final, was actually approved by cabinet. So it's, 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 it's pretty, uh, pretty new and that kind of contributes potentially to the prematurity argument. To coin a, to use a councillor gardener word, notwithstanding the fact that this application was made three years ago. Uh, the circumstances have changed, not only for this application, but doubtless for adjoining, um, businesses or even the, uh, potential owners of the potent, of, of, of adjacent sites. So is there anywhere else that you can have further births apart from this?
There are probably only two locations within the town where we can fit a sizable marina. One is the, where the current application is. The other one is across from the old Middlewich boatyard, um, where the current poaching's club or the community church now resides. So they're both on the Brooks Lane Plan area where them two can go. Um, this is by far probably the best place, really. I mean, the best place would be where the community church is, but that's the community church. So it only really leaves us this place. There's nowhere else within the town boundary that we can fit a marina at all. So.
So you're saying then Chair, that there are potentially two locations where there could be a marina? Is it either or, or a possibility of both?
Well, what I'm saying is it, it, the, the, the only other real, realistic place for the marina because of the, the level of the canal, you need the level access, obviously, because, you know, we, you can't flow water uphill as such. So one is on the site of the old poaching's club, which is now the Middlewich Community Church. There are no plans for the community church to move out of there. And I believe they've just took a new lease up. So that's out of the question. So obviously this leaves us with the, uh, present, um, application, which is the only other place that we can really fit a marina. Um, I just don't see where else it can go. There is not enough land anywhere else within the town sited next to the canal.
Right. So the conclusion is then that if, if this is, this is probably the only available site that's even capable of, 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 of making contribution towards a marina of, of up to 50 births. And that sends us then that, uh, the 50 berth marina would need to be bigger than this. Twice as, for argument's sake. I mean, I, you know, I'm no expert on boat sizes, but I assume for the canal, you're talking about long boats anyway. So it's going to be, it needs to be at least double this size to, to cater for up to fit, well, anything approaching 50.
I mean, at the town council, um, the debate, I believe, because I didn't take part in that debate, but the, um, the debate was that, um, Middlewich has been looking for a marina for a long time. One of the original sites was now where the moorings, uh, housing development is. So we lost the site there, which is, um, on the far end of town, on the Cheshire West, Cheshire East border. Um, the reason that the town council are pushing so hard for this is because it is probably, well, it is without a doubt the only site that's really left for us to, um, have a marina. There's nowhere else left within the boundary of the town. That's why the town council pushed so hard for it. And they have, of course, tried to be, um, they have tried to, to be reasonable, as in saying up to 50 bays and not saying 50 bays or else. We, you know, the town council realised that it isn't just a matter of saying, we want, you must give. What they were asking for was for the developers, the Cheshire East and the master plan to recognise the contribution that this site can make towards the tourist economy of our town. The tourist economy of our town is the only way that we will su- survive a main street in our town. It's not surviving just by building houses. Because if it was just by building houses, we would have one of the strongest town centres in the borough. And that's not true. We, we, our town centre's dying and we need the extra income from tourists, tourism to supplement our town centre. I hope that helps, councillor Hubbard.
Thanks very much, Chair. Thank you.
Um, can we now go to councillor Jeffrey?
Thanks Chair. Um, yeah, so on the, uh, on, on the number of births thing, um, I, I can, I can see why this has happened, obviously, because, um, this was like an application in a box waiting to be, um, submitted as soon as that condition for a master plan, um, um, to be satisfied. So I, I can see that they, they tried to meet the up to 20 and then lastminute.com, we've, we've gone and, uh, changed it to up to 50. lastminute.com, we've gone and changed it to up to fifty at the last meeting. So I really can't, this is why I asked at the beginning about whether whether the number of berths was setting stone at this stage. Because the wording of the SPD is that it's up to fifty, so we can't use like Daniel said, that's not satisfied, even if they put one berth, that criteria would still be satisfied. So we can't, we can't refuse it on those terms. But if we can say this isn't, if that number of berths isn't setting stone and it's to be determined at at reserve matters, then we've got a bit of wriggle room there. And if the applicant is minded to try and start, those discussions could be had. The other thing, a point to make was the discussion that was had earlier about the the noise with the, what is Rockford Stone and Slate? And to me, the comments that Tasleen was making earlier, it seems to me that it's a matter of timing. So if she's bought the business and is up and running ahead of the reserve matters, then the reserve matters will have to abide by the noise that her business is making. Otherwise, if she starts her business after that, after the reserve matters, then it's up to her to put mitigation measures in. So I think that's just a timing thing that we have to deal with at reserve matters. But in summary, I think I'm minded to support this, this application for outline permission. I'm not happy about the number of berths because I think it's a missed opportunity, but I don't think we can use it as a grounds for refusal in this outline mission application. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much. Ashley Farrell.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just again, just a point on the berth thing. I just feel it's maybe slightly misworded. I think the modification probably missed a step there because obviously, references before the SPD modification was circa twenty berths. And that's been replaced to up to fifty berths. I think the wording there should have been a bit more accurate, saying if it was, pre-existing was circa twenty berths and you change it to up to fifty berths, then the assumption would be that at least twenty berths, up to fifty berths. And I think that that was probably a missed opportunity there to put that clarity in the modification. With that in mind, and you know, it would be a missed opportunity here not to hit that level of berths for the marina. I would be minded to support a deferral if it came across. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak? Does anybody wish to put any any more points across? And we'll go back to the officers. So do we have any, can you round up, Daniel? Before we go to vote and look for a motion?
Yeah, I think largely there's, there's a few main issues where members are concerned about. Firstly, we've got the number of berths. I've expressed my view on that matter. Secondly, we've got this issue of noise from the adjacent uses. And again, I've tried to clarify that. We just don't know what will happen with the adjacent sites. And what, the way we've suggested in the report, that there's going to be a requirement for noise mitigation conditions. And then finally, we've got this point about the piecemeal form of development and the prematurity. Clearly, that was the reason for refusal as part of the last application. So you can see that set out in the planning and history section. It is linked to, we did link it previously to the master plan led approach, but I suppose potential members were still concerned that the development was a piecemeal form of development, but there is still wording you could use within that reason for refusal. Because it picks up on the concerns about pedestrian and cycle links, which is the connections, which councillors have gone and raised, noise mitigation, which a lot of members are amazed. So I think in terms of the decision now, I don't think we can, it's the members to decide whether they want to defer to see if we can make some changes, but we're not certainly, certainly in terms of the piecemeal issue and the noise, we're not going to resolve those under this current application. You may get a slight increase in the number of Cadellbotch berths, but other than that, I think the application is as it is. It's put in by one landowner for part of a larger site. So I think it's over to the members how they want to play it, whether they have approved, refused or defer the application.
Yeah, just one question, Daniel. It doesn't actually meet parking provision either, does it?
No, that's covered in the report. So if you look in the highway section, that the parking provision is is below standard, so that's another issue we've raised with the application. If you also look at the design from a parking point of view, looking at some of the site plans, it is clearly quite car-dominated frontages along some of the blocks within the development. And those are the issues we'd hope to deal with at reserve matter stage, but again, issues, negative parts of this indicative plan. But yeah, it does fall below standard as shown on the indicative plan.
Thank you very much. Councillor Gardner, I believe you would like to come back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason I want to come back is because I want to make sure that members are aware that it was I who chaired the discussion on the item relating to the supplementary planning document at the last meeting. And it was I who went to the cabinet to speak to our proposed amendments. And it was interesting that councillor Fox and other members of the cabinet were fully supportive, not only of our suggestion, but also the thinking behind our suggestion, which was that this afforded a opportunity to Middlewich. And I think that if we were to accept the application in its current form, we would be not only going against the wishes of Middlewich Town Council, which interestingly, have we had a report, updated report on that? Because I don't remember seeing anything on either the papers, the update that I'd received as of yesterday morning or on today, that Middlewich Council's views have been reported on this particular application. Though I do know they commented significantly on the supplementary planning document. And I think that there are a number of unanswered questions which may not be resolved by this application. And I think this application is premature on the grounds that it was submitted in advance of the final approval of the supplementary planning document. It also fails to recognise that integral to the development of this site is the manner in which the adjoining sites are developed. And furthermore, Tasleen's observations earlier on in our meeting make it quite clear that the intention of the company she represents, if it's not her personally, is to continue with the current use on the neighbouring side, which is not really appropriate in a residential area. And I can tell members that many years ago, when I was a planning officer, I dealt with a scheme for a housing development that was adjacent to a nightclub. Rather small and very select nightclub, but this nightclub subsequently had to cease trading because despite the five metre high wall that was constructed between the application site where houses were built and the nightclub, because of the change in the music played at this nightclub from pop to drum and bass, the vibrations from the nightclub were so bad as the residents of the new houses were able to put in an objection to its music licence being renewed and consequently, the venue went to the wall. So there is no guarantee to Tasleen that there won't be a similar problem if the noise generated from her business is so bad that she has got to put mitigation in place that is so restrictively expensive that she can no longer trade. And I think that's unreasonable. And I think that we need to refuse this application on the grounds of its prematurity to allow the landowner and our officers to work with the neighbouring landowners to come up with something that produces a far more integrated scheme that actually reflects the wishes of the supplementary planning document and the policies of this council. We do not operate in a vacuum as a planning board. We are still required to consider the policy, the generic policies of the council. And this is an approved document by the cabinet, and therefore it has to be given significant weight. And I think because of the timing of this application relative to the approval by the cabinet of the document, this is no, that cannot have taken place appropriately. So I am proposing that this application be refused on the grounds of prematurity and that the reasons for that prematurity are its failure to fully comply with the updated version of the supplementary planning document. And it's also, it's the potential to provide poor quality relationships between this site and its immediate neighbours in terms of inappropriate mixing of land uses and of noise and disturbance, but also that it fails to provide a good quality of interaction between residential properties and adjoining commercial activity.
Thank you. So that's a proposal. And I would like to second that proposal with a caveat to make sure that a full and thorough investigation into the number of bays provided on the site is more circa fifty rather than twenty.
I have no problem in accepting that amendment.
Thank you very much, councillor Gardner. I have two people that wish to speak. I have David Malcolm and Sheila Dillon. So before I move to the vote or any amendments, Mr. Malcolm.
Thank you, Chair. I suppose I was just going to reiterate a little bit of the issues of the landownerships in terms of, this is an outline planning application. If members' concerns are about the size or the nature of the number of berths on the site, as we've indicated, these plans are indicative. It doesn't mean, and we're not, there's nowhere that we have it within the set of conditions where we're saying that there will be eighteen berths. If, for example, members are saying, well, they want a minimum, for example, of twenty-five as an example, then it is within your gift to do that. My concern a little bit at the moment is just, the prematurity issue is that we have now, we've adopted an SPD, we have a master plan. So in terms of the previous reason where we had concerns it had been brought forward prior to the master plan, that disappears. So you have to look at reasons that are specific to this application. The noise issues, we've got various conditions to look at that in the future, and Dan's indicated that we've got conditions to safeguard adjacent uses. And I reiterate the issue of, there is, I know comments have been made on chat that shouldn't have been in terms of adjacent landowners, but we are not in control of the adjacent land. And I still have indications that there is some positivity from adjacent landowners to work with work with this, work with the site. So I think, I think we just need to bring it back to focus on this particular application. I think prematurity is a really difficult one to argue. What's it premature of? I mean, if it's in accordance with the master plan in terms of its principles, then potentially it's acceptable. Where members are clearly expressing concerns, and I completely understand this, is about the size of the marina, particularly in terms of the context of making a larger marina potentially. That could still come forward at reserve matters. And as I say, you could look to impose conditions to say you do want a larger marina. What we've got here is follows a number of, yeah, a number of iterations to an extent. And it's evolved over a number of years, as you've seen. So so I think, yes, I'm just concerned about a refusal on prematurity grounds and where that might leave us in an appeal position, to be perfectly honest. So I think that's all I just wanted to say, given that we'd, I was going to say something else at the start, but we've now moved on to possible reason for refusal anyway, so.
Thank you very much. Can I just ask, just ask a question, Mr. Malcolm? In my days on Congalton Borough, when we received the planning application, all these drawings that we've received here would be stamped with a received date. So when were these drawings received? And was it before the change in the SPD?
I don't know.
Can you switch your camera off, please? Thank you very much. Because obviously, it would be premature if the SDP had changed and these plans were already in. That would mean that they haven't taken these into account.
Yeah, the plans were received, it was either the end of July, beginning of August, because we undertook a new three-week consultation, which expired towards mid-end of August. So that's when they were received.
So these plans have not changed since the cabinet adopted the supplementary planning document?
No, because the cabinet only adopted the supplementary planning document a couple of weeks ago.
So, right, so this doesn't take into account the changes that were made within the supplementary planning document?
No.
Right, okay, thank you very much. Right. Sheila, you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think it would help for members to get clear in their minds the decision-making track that every planning committee is on. So we look at the planning application that is in front of us. We can't go town planning in the wider area about what we might like to see elsewhere. We must look at what's on the table. And we have to apply section thirty-eight six of the 2004 Act, which tells us that our decision must be in accordance with the development plan unless material considerations indicate otherwise. And here, it's clear from the report that this outline application, no details yet, but outline, is in accordance with our structure plan policy, our strategic policy. And with regard to material considerations, well, of course, the recent SPD is one of those. But with regard to the marina, it says up to fifty. Now, that does not imply that it has to be around fifty, that it has to be within ten or twenty per cent of fifty. Simply doesn't do that. So we can't say that just because plans were submitted before the date of the SDP that they're out of line with it. It's not the date of their submission that's important, it's the content of those plans. Are they actually broadly in line with what's in the master plan? And again, the advice is yes. Of course, we can't force a group of applicants to make a joint submission, a group application. We look at what's in front of us at the time and ask, is that in line with the policy and the SPD? With regard to noise, again, the position is quite clear. The applicant who is introducing a new use introducing a new use has to provide noise assessments, noise surveys, and if they are an agent of change, which is introducing um a new um loud noise that might disrupt existing residents, or if they're introducing residential use into a noisy area, then it's up to them in the design of the layout, the scale, um the design of the buildings to make sure that the internal and external noise environment is satisfactory. So this is an outline application and we expect those details to be thoroughly gone to at whatever time the reserved matters come in and we have two conditions to make sure that the agent of change here is going to produce a satisfactory noise environment. We can't control um whether an existing permitted use in the future becomes noisier on what would be the residents of this development. But if they do, then as councillor Jeffrey said, he hit the nail right on the head, at that time, environmental health will look into whether they have created a noise nuisance. But at the moment, that's not what we are looking at. So with regard to a refusal on grounds of prematurity, I'd have uh very strong concerns about how that would weather an appeal inquiry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stuart, you wish to come back?
I do, Mr Chairman. Um perhaps the word prematurity is the wrong word to use, but certainly um and and I I I congratulate Ms Dillon on her um legal interpretation of what is before us, but this is going to be uh people's homes. And we seem to be thinking it's perfectly okay to allow a development and I accept that we haven't got the details, but I also have twenty-five years of experience of inspectors and I'm afraid that good barristers will tell the inspector, ah, but the council had this layout in front of them when they made the decision to approve and suddenly that becomes the basis on which the inspector makes a decision. So we have to say at the very least, this layout is not acceptable and that has to be specified in the decision notice. Otherwise, we will be holding to ransom the people of Middlewich and it is not appropriate to do that. I would also like to say that the opportunity to secure a good quality development in this location is being missed. But my basic point is that if we were to refuse this uh allow this application and a scheme comes forward for reserve matters, it would be perfectly legitimate for the applicants to say, we cannot provide more than eighteen bays on this site because of the economic viability of this site for development. And I accept that. And the fact of the matter is the reason why we have a master plan or a supplementary planning document is to ensure that we get the best op- development opportunities for Middlewich going forward. This application predates the submission of this application, even with the amended plans, predates the council's decision to amend the supplementary planning document. Therefore, at the very least, the applicant should have an opportunity to revisit this and see whether or not they wish to withdraw this application and work with their neighbours to go forward. But I think actually if we say this application in its current form does not comply with the spirit of the supplementary planning document, that is accessible, that that is acceptable. The point with regard to the um the viability is that if we want there to be a larger marina, and I accept it's up to fifty, but let's take this scenario, shall we? We allocate a piece of land or we give outline planning permission for up to two hundred houses. And an applicant comes in with twenty Palladium Mansions. Are we going to approve that scheme? Of course we're not, because the purpose of that plan is to ensure that we have somewhere in the region of two hundred houses. So therefore, when we say up to fifty births, what we are seeking is somewhere in the region of fifty births and I'm afraid eighteen is incredibly shy. So members may not wish to support my proposition and I am um happy on Ms Dillon's suggestion to perhaps change the word uh premature, but I do think it's it 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 can't be technically premature because obviously the SPD has been adopted, but the applicants have submitted all of the information that we are considering prior to that. And so we need to find a form of words in which we can say the applicant has not had the opportunity to take on board the shift in policy relating to the supplementary planning document and therefore at the very least this application needs to be deferred. But I think we should be refusing it to be fair to the applicant. Because if we refuse this, the applicant, we can then take it forward. And I think we can defend this at appeal. We can defend it on the grounds that we have a a a very definite policy which cannot be complied with fully by this application.
Thank you very much, councillor Gardner. Uh councillor Farrell, you wish to speak?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Um yeah, I think on the technical grounds, I do, I am concerned about the wording of the um supplementary planning document. Unfortunately, I wasn't in the SPV meeting when I was discussing how to leave, so I would, I think I would probably pick that up. Um obviously, as it's a fresh document that's just been approved, I don't know if there's any scope there. Maybe Sheila could let us know if there's any scope there to, you know, tighten up the wording and that because, you know, up to fifty is it's a bit, you know, it's a bit woolly and this this on before does technically meet that up to fifty. One is up to fifty, isn't it? It's like um I I I do, I do agree with councillor Gardner. It's it's not within the spirit of the change of the wording, but technically it does meet that wording. Um I do feel that needs to be tightened up. Is there any scope we can do for tightening tightening that word up now wording up now after it's been um published? Because I'm not happy with that at all.
Sheila, would you like to come back if you could? I'll get to you in a minute, Phil.
I have no doubt that um we would, we would not do well um following an argument that this application does not comply with the spirit of the SDP, of the SPD. Um and up to fifty, it there is just no evidence, no way of arguing that that in fact means in the region of, you know, when when it originally it was worded circa twenty. That's a lot clearer, isn't it? Around twenty, but up to fifty, it does not mean some numbers either side of fifty. So I'm afraid not, that would not be a good, strong, solid ground to base a refusal on.
Okay.
Just to come back on that, um my second point, well, my first point actually was um is any scope? Obviously, that's just been adopted now. Is any scope to amend that document to, you know, show up that wording to be circa fifty instead of up to fifty?
That would be, I think, for David, I would have thought. Go on, Sheila, if you wish to answer.
Well, you'd be asking um portfolio holder, it might have been cabinet, um to change a decision in the document they made. Um they passed relatively recently. So, no.
Okay, right, okay. So councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Um I too have some sympathy, a lot of sympathy actually with what councillor Farrell said about the wording, but I understand it might be difficult to to change that at this stage in terms of the circa fifty. It would have been better if we'd have said something like circa twenty to fifty or something like that because that would have made it more specific. But it's easy to be wise after the event. Um I also have a lot of sympathy with um what councillor Gardner has said and councillor Hunter as well in in terms of the issues here because we've it's a complicated issue, but we've got we've got a development which does seem to be supported by surrounding business owners and other developments. But and there are issues, yes, they can be raised at uh reserved matters, which are quite significant. The noise issue, for instance, um that could have an implication on somebody's business and that's a big responsibility for us to shoulder making the decision that might have an impact on on people's ability to trade. I I do think that there is um uh all along, I felt there's a sort of uneasy mix here. I mean, I I think in principle the idea of mixed development is good, but it's got to be the right kind of mixed development. And we've asked, we've got an application where we're looking at um a certain amount of sort of talk, want of a better word, tourist use, residential use and industrial and commercial use. And it's very difficult to get that right. I I've also got a lot of um sympathy, obviously, from the the legal perspective that Sheila Dillon's brought forward and I am very nervous about appeals, I have to say. If you're going to sort of refuse this, we've got to be absolutely clear um on the grounds for that and not leave ourselves wide open to an appeal. My inclination at the moment, having listened to the debate, is to if it could be some sort of, how can I put it, a strongly worded deferral that would allow time to uh clarify some of these points. We're working with with by from what I can gather, um businesses in the area were uh very benignly disposed to this. Um there's a lot of su- the support from the town council and by the sounds of it as well. Um there's these small but really crucial points that need to be addressed and I at the moment I am in favour of deferring rather than refusing.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Phil. Councillor Higginson?
Well, it's a case of great minds thinking alike, isn't it? Um to be honest, I'm I'm inclined to support a deferral rather than refusal. Um it would be interesting to know what officers' advice might be, but um it seems to me that uh the it would be reasonable to give the applicant opportunity to take into account the recently approved um supplementary planning document for a start uh and to consider some of the outline layouts and so forth. So, I mean, my personal view is to support a diff- uh as councillor Williams just said, perhaps a strongly worded deferral, but 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 basically to give the applicant further opportunity to discuss uh what's being proposed uh with the uh well, with all concern, whether it's council officers or indeed um anybody else in the vicinity, whether it's the, you know, the neighbouring businesses or the town council. I think that would be the best way forward, to be honest. And so that so that the 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 application can take fully into account the 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 S um.
SPD. Yeah. Thank you very much. Um councillor Jeffrey?
Chair, actually, I think Ashley was before me. I think he just wants.
Yeah, well, I'm going to bring Ashley back for the last one.
Okay, okay, thanks, Chair. Uh I I um I don't really understand this discussion because it the the fact that they've they the kind of implication that they've not had a chance to review the SPD and that they have, they've seen it and I'm sure Daniel's spoken to them about it. The only change we made a few weeks ago was a minor wording change and this this application is still compliant with it. And it's it's not a grounds for review. I just don't understand this. It's not a it's not a grounds, however much we dislike it. Um and that I don't really understand why it's grounds for deferral either. They have seen it. They do comply with it and therefore we we.
I asked I asked Daniel if it spoke to them about it and he hadn't.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Stand corrected?
No, 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 no. Earlier on, I did ask him specifically and he didn't, so.
Okay. But the fact remains that they they have seen it beforehand and.
Well, one would hope.
In material terms, nothing's changed since then, so.
One would hope, but then we shouldn't assume anything, should we?
True.
An instructor once said to me, never assume anybody's turning just because their indicators are. So.
Fair enough.
We'll go to Ashley for his final point that.
Yeah, just to, you know, I I'd say agree with what councillor Jeffrey just said. Um the wording from circa twenty birth to up to fifty birth, it's the same, it's the same thing. Um technically, it's the same. Um so I just want clarification. I know Sheila said it's difficult to ask or it might be awkward. I just want to know if it's possible, yes or no, to get the cabinet member to go back to uh the portfolio, to take it back to cabinet, to um reword it to be more, you know, um certain of what we're actually asking for in that. Um is that a yes? Can we do it? Yes or no? That's all I want to know.
Thank you. My understanding would be that that would not be possible, but David, if you could just clarify?
Um yeah, I mean, it's been it's been done. The decision's been made. Um the detail that follows on that is where we're at, which is to basically review the application as submitted and determine if it's going to be acceptable in terms of um both the SPD but also in terms of the wider cheshire local plan strategy. Uh and that said, um of the two options that are on the table at the moment, uh while I don't want a deferral because I think it's in potentially, um you know, we've we've been here before, this is an application that's been three years in the making, if you like. Um there have been some tweets on it.
Refused last time, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, but this is the. Yeah, this is the resubmitted resubmitted scheme. So um so I think and but I think refusal is is certainly something that um as as Sheila's indicated, I think we would we would potentially struggle at an appeal. So um if if members aren't on in in favour of the scheme, and I know you've not got that discussion finally just yet, but if if there isn't a a support of the scheme, then I'd I'd certainly request the deferral to avoid a a very difficult appeal. Um I thi- this is a tricky one. I I while we've been speaking, there has been correspondence coming in from the adjacent landowner, um as I suspected, who is still supportive of the scheme. Um that's a little bit tricky because clearly I wouldn't normally be able to have access to that, but um I know the um the the speaker that spoke also put something on chat. So I think to balance the um the the sort of the comments, but all I would say is that we're not in control of adjacent land. Um that that's reality. Daniel's mentioned that earlier on and I'll repeat that. But um so I think it's just of of the two that issues that seem to be on the on the table, I think we've got a real mixed views. Um clearly, the concerns seem to be about the size of the marina. I do reiterate, if members want to sort of impose a condition to say they want a minimum size, that is within your gift today because it's an indicative application. Um but yeah, I think in terms of of a deferral refusal, if if that's the way it goes, I'd certainly take a deferral at the moment. Um because I think there are reasons to perhaps get some clarity around perhaps a revised plan that shows a slightly bigger marina. Or be it, we could put that in as a condition, but that might give just some certainty for those members that are concerned. But um I I I think I'm inclined to to agree with councillor Jeffrey in terms of that there is something here that we could approve and the detail would follow. Uh we could put a condition on, which is what councillor Gardner was referring to earlier on about um and notwithstanding that the the submitted plans um that we have a marina of X number of births, for example. Uh and that's certainly something that has been done and it's certainly um, you know, you're watertight enough to to go forward with. And so I suppose those are my 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 final points, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Just to come back on that, sorry, just to come back on that then, within the scope of the wording as it exists, following what um Mr Malcolm just said there, um would the better route be, in my mind, would be to approve with a condition of, say, the circa twenty? route be, in my mind, would be to approve with a condition of, say, circa twenty-five births or thirty births, or whatever you think, Chair, as you're local to the area. So, that would fit within the wording of the buying document. If we put in a condition on approval to say circa twenty, thirty births, and then that way, that's a condition in the approval. And that'd be the way around this. I would say that's the way I, I would see things.
Thank you very much. So is that a proposal?
I would like to hear your thoughts on the number. So if you, if you suggested a number, I would be happy. I propose then that we approve with a condition on a number of births. And I'll let you amend that to the number you think is appropriate.
Thank you very much. Okay, councillor Farrell. Just before I do anything else, councillor Morton?
David Malcolm's pretty much answered the question I was going to ask anyway. I mean, I do feel there's too many questions unanswered. So I would be pressing for deferral. But I'll just let you carry on debating.
Thank you very much, councillor Morton. Councillor Groves?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I have to say that I, I've listened with interest. And I've taken on board Sheila Dillon's comments and David Malcolm's comments. And I would be happy to second the proposal that Ashley Farrell has put forward of approving with a condition.
Thank you very much. Okay, so you're seconding councillor Farrell's. And I would like that to say thirty bays.
Well, I'm content with, with that. But I, I do feel that the condition does need to reflect a number. I agree.
I think that's fair on us and it's fair on the developer.
I'll accept that amendment.
Thank you very much. Right.
Can I just come in there, Chair? So we actually have now two proposals. And the first one was refusal, which councillor Gardner moved and yourself seconded. And now we have another motion to approve, which councillor Farrell's moved for, moved that. And that's been seconded by councillor Groves. We would need to take the refusal first because that was the one that was on the table first. So it would, unless you were withdrawing your second to the...
Councillor Gardner, you wish to speak?
Thank you for allowing me to use the shorthand version. I'm happy to withdraw my, my proposal. And I would support the proposition put forward by councillors Farrell and Groves, on the understanding that there is a clear condition which says that the indicative layout is not acceptable in its current form, and that this council is not affording any support for that layout in its current form, in addition to the requirement for a marina in the region of thirty bays. So if councillor Farrell is happy to add that extra condition on, I would be happy to support him. But I am withdrawing my recommendation to assist.
Sorry, sorry, Stuart. Just so, not thirty bays, but in the region of thirty bays?
Oh, well, if you want it to be at least thirty bays, Mr Chairman, that is similar. But I think that thirty bays is the least that we can expect for it to be worthwhile in terms of it being a feature. That was, not wishing to rehash previous arguments, but those were the points made in the debates over the last time we discussed this matter. So yes, either of those. But what I'm saying is, I think there needs to be a specific condition which says that we do not support the current layout, because it's not just the marina. There are another, there are a number of other flaws with the thing. And we have to make that clear to be fair to the applicants, but also to protect the council in case there is a subsequent, the reserve matters application comes in and it presents that as the basis for the layout.
Okay. Councillor Farrell and councillor Groves, are you happy to accept those amendments?
I'm happy to accept them, Chair, yeah.
I would, I would like the wording of that to be the condition of a bay layout that would accommodate at least thirty bays.
Yeah, births, yeah.
A condition attached to, for the bay layout to accommodate at least thirty births. So...
Have you got that, Sarah?
I've got that, Chairman. I'm just a bit unclear in regard to councillor Gardner's proposal or suggested amendment. And I just would like perhaps Sheila to, to give some advice or David, just to, so we've got the wording very clear.
That we don't accept the indicative layout?
Right. David is, and if David can just clarify, that's something we can add in.
David?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. So the suggested conditions would be certainly one around, notwithstanding detailed plans shall include a marina of at least thirty births. So that covers the point that you've, you've raised and was, was on the table at the moment. And then there would be a second condition around just a general one, that no details of the indicative plans to be accepted. Or, you know, again, notwithstanding the details submitted, that no consent is given for the indicative plans, the advice submitted, or some wording along those lines. So yeah, happy to, to include two conditions to provide members with that comfort. And, you know, the reserve matters will provide the detail anyway. So I'm perfectly happy with, with both of those conditions to give members that assurance.
Thank you very much. Sheila, before I move to the vote, do you have any, oh, sorry, Daniel, do you wish to speak first?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm with members. I said at the beginning that the section 106 contributions should include the NHS contribution of ninety-five thousand six hundred and sixteen, which we've got suggested triggers. So that need to be included. And then I also suggested two additional conditions. One was about the occupancy of the retirement apartments of the over fifty-fives. And then the first, the second additional condition was the first reserve matters application to include details of ANEEP and the POS. And then the separation distance to the nearest dwellings for the ANEEP. And then I also suggested a slight amendment to the standard outline condition number three to make reference to the noise mitigation measures. So just to double check that that's all included within the resolution.
Yeah, yeah, that's there, that's there. Sheila, do you have any last minute advice before I move to the vote?
No, those extra conditions make it clear that we haven't accepted the principle of the marina that's shown on the current plans, that the new plans must show something different.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Sheila, for your contribution today. Right, so I will move to the vote. I'll get my little piece of paper ready for marking everybody on. So before I move to the vote, does everybody, can we just, Sarah, can you just read the proposal again, please?
So, Chairman, it's moved and seconded for approval, subject to all the amendments that Dan's just read out. And I can go through them again, but I've got them all down. Plus the two additional conditions you've just said in relation to the bays in the region. So it's accommodate at least thirty bays. And then obviously, the wording that David's suggesting about, suggested about no consent given to the indicative plans are submitted. So obviously, we'll just need to work on the actual wording of that, but in line with what councillor Gardner was proposing. So yeah, I'm clear, Chair.
So if we can, oh, right, sorry, Peter, do you wish to speak again, sorry?
No, no, Chair, I'm fine. I'll move to the vote.
All right, okay, then we'll move to the vote. So councillor Critchley?
Approve.
For councillor Edgar?
Thank you, Chair. I need to abstain. I lost contact between quarter to eleven and eleven o'clock. I was unable to notify until I came back in.
Thank you very much, councillor Edgar. Councillor Farrell?
Approve.
Councillor Gardner?
Approve.
Councillor Groves?
Approve.
Councillor Ogben?
For.
Councillor Jeffrey?
Approve.
Councillor Morton?
Abstain.
Abstain. Councillor Redstone? Councillor Redstone?
Approve.
Thank you very much, councillor Redstone. Councillor Weatherill?
Approve.
Councillor Williams?
Approve.
And I'll vote for two. So there we go.
That's carried, Chairman.
So that's carried, just two abstentions. Thank you very much. Now, at this part of the procedure of the meeting, I'm going to hand over to the vice chairman, as I've got a family matter to deal with. So councillor Gardner, it's over to you.
Thank you. I'm just getting the agenda up, the text up, rather, that I need to follow. So if you can bear with me a second.
No problem.
Right, ladies and gentlemen, now going to move to item six, which is application two zero, two three, two six. Sorry, I'll start again. Two zero, oblique, two three, two six, C Charlie, approval of reserve matters brackets appearance following outline application one six zero five two nine Charlie, which was then subject of an appeal. I'm not going to read the whole reference out, for nineteen thousand two hundred and thirty-six square metres of employment floor space, land at Crewe Road, Radley Green North, Alsager for Mrs Miranda Bell, Commercial Developments Project Limited. And I'm going to ask Mr Evans to speak on this item, please.
Thank you. I'll get the presentation up for you, members. So you can see from the officer report, this application's been referred to committee at the request of councillor Williams. It's not, we've already had, got an outline consent on this site. And you can see with the officer report, there's a outline approval which gives details of the access landscaping layout and scale. So all of those matters have been approved, and we're only discussing appearance today. And that's where we should be focusing the discussion for the debate solely on the appearance. You'll see within the, on the location plan on screen, it's an area of land to the south of Crewe Road. So Crewe Road is here in Alsager. It's adjacent to the Plough Public House, which is over here. That's the junction for what takes you down to Radway Green. There's a railway running to the southern boundary of the site. There are pylons crossing the site along this line here. And there's also a water course crossing the site in here. There, you can see the site of Radway Green. And that's the aerial photograph of the site. So it's on the edge of Alsager. And I should also know, but you should also know that this site here has got consent for residential development, which has been built out at the moment. These are the photographs of the site. So this is looking east along Crewe Road. So this is looking towards Alsager. So you can see the application site is on the right, relatively flat. Well, it does slope down slightly from the road and down towards the water course. You can see the pylons, which I mentioned, crossing the site on that photograph. And you can see some of the residential properties opposite just there. That's looking in the opposite direction towards, the direction towards Crewe. So the Radway Green junction is just on here. You've got a converted barn in there and a B and B just there. This is looking southwest across the site. So you can see, this is taken from the verge along Crewe Road. So the railway is, you can't quite see, but it's in here somewhere. And then this, this planting in here screens the Radway Green site. And that's looking, again, east across the site. That's standing pretty centrally within the site, looking towards some of the properties to the north. So that's the B and B I mentioned and the converted barn. And this is the southern field. So the site's split into three fields. So this is the approved layout. So the layout, as I've said, the height, the scale of the buildings has been approved, as has the landscaping and the access. So all of the stuff you can see on this plan has got approved, been approved. And all we're discussing is the appearance of the development. You can see within the officer report that as part of her decision, the inspector imposed a number of conditions. This includes a condition number five, which basically requires the reserve matters to be carried out substantially in accordance with a detailed design guide prepared by Randall Thorpe dated November twenty nineteen. So that was submitted with the appeal, and it's included within your key plans pack. So basically, that limits the areas of discussion even further. So these are the proposed elevations. So you can see the proposed appearance of the development. Basically, a box form development with hipped roofs and hidden drainage details. And they've got similar designed entrance features on the, on the plans. And you can see within the key plans how it compares to the design guide referred to in condition five. The colour of the building hasn't been approved. There's the suggestion of blue, green or beige colours. That's covered within the update report. And we've got a condition to deal with that, with that matter. And then there are a number of conditions which would be discharged as part of this application, which you can see discussed in the officer report. And the suggestion is that this application is delegated to the head of planning to determine in consultation with the chair. We've got a few minor outstanding issues. So there's a biodiversity strategy required by condition number seven on the outline consent. And we just require some soil sampling for that just to ensure that the wildflower meadows can take the soil on the site. And then we've also got a minor issue in terms of a United Utilities pipe which may cross the site. Just to update you on that, the applicant has dug a number of trenches. And within one of those trenches, they found a pipe, but it's not there in any of the others. So they're going to carry out further investigations. It may be that the pipeline's been abandoned and no longer in use. But they have said that they will divert the pipeline in any event, should there be an approval. So you can see the recommendation to delegate. And then, just going back through, these are the elevations, I didn't look through, but you can see they're all a standard, standard design. And then members, you will also note there is an update with this application, which you can see, it's only a very short update. All it does is cover some additional information provided by the applicant. So they've provided a statement on compliance with the design guide and a note on the use of green walls. So it's recommended to be delegated as per the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's all right. I was trying to do two things at once, read the inbox. Before we go any further, Sarah Baxter wishes to advise us all of something. So Sarah, over to you.
Yes, sorry, Chairman. Sorry, it's looking to councillor Williams. And it's what I messaged you before, but you probably didn't get to see the email. I believe town councillor Huff was going to sit with you because he's had issues accessing teams. But I think he's dialed in. So can I just confirm he's not going to be with you? And if that's correct, once you finish speaking, I'll remove you from the meeting. Obviously, if he was sitting in the same room as you, I wouldn't be able to remove you from the meeting because that would mean he blew his connection. So if you can just confirm whether or not he is with you. And if he isn't, I will remove you after you've spoken. And if he is, I won't.
Okay. Well, as you can hopefully see, he is not with me. I believe he had intended to, but then he decided to call in by phone. And it might be that he's looking at the chat. I can see the chat, but I can't for some reason type on to it. But that's why I didn't respond to you earlier, Sarah. But if councillor Huff is ringing by, available by phone, then obviously he can, he can speak for himself. But he isn't, he isn't in the same building as me, no.
That's great. Thank you.
Meeting after I made my comments.
So I'll remove you from the meeting and then I'll call you back in when the application's being dealt with.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
That's okay, Sarah. Just for members of the public who may be listening or watching to this meeting, the reason why councillor Williams will be removed from the meeting is because he is going to use his, his right to speak as the ward member, and therefore he cannot take part or be present for the debate. So Sarah will technically remove him from, she will remove him using technology from our meeting. And councillor Williams will resume his membership at this board once that item has been concluded. Though looking at the time, it may be that that will be after a lunch break. So if I can now ask councillor Williams to address the meeting in his capacity as ward councillor, please. So if I can now ask councillor Williams to address the meeting in his capacity as ward councillor, please. You will need to turn on your screen and unmute yourself councillor Williams.
Yes, I was doing that.
That's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I hadn't lost you somewhere.
Okay, that's fine, terrific. Well, thank you Chair. I'm very glad to get the opportunity to speak on this issue as a ward councillor. And even more pleased that this scope for the voices of residents to be heard alongside elected representatives. This is a highly significant development at a key location at one of the main gateways to our town. The people of Alsager are going to have to live with the presence and appearance of these warehouses for many years to come. Visitors approaching from the west will inevitably encounter them and receive their initial impression of our town from the visual impact that they create. It's essential that the visual appearance is right and right in context. That's the basis for my call in request. This aspect is too important, I believe, to go throughout debate at committee level and gratefully opportunity that it's doing so. And without the input of residents and their elected representatives. We are asked to discuss one aspect and one aspect only, visual appearance. This strategic planning board, in my view, has a good track record so far in debating the visual and aesthetic aspects of planning proposals. And I'd urge the board to continue in that vein as they consider the recommendations before them today. Now I'd like to draw attention to my particular concerns. One of them has been indicated by Daniel Evans, I'm pleased to see, because Holly Byrne, for various human error reasons, has been left out perhaps in previous applications. We're not talking about those. And they weren't consulted on this one, again, human error. But I'm glad to see that our attention has been drawn to that. And it's rightly cited among the concerns that residents have raised on page fifty one. It's direct that particular property and the adjacent Holly House Hotel directly upon the units which are closest to Crew Road. And they will have to live with a visual impact. And I'm pleased to note that the applicant has agreed to consult with the town council on the colour schemes and credations. That's very welcome. But I would also press for further involvement from residents and from network rail as listed in the town council's proposals. I also acknowledge that the development complies with the detailed design guide and is recommended for approval on that account. I recall a number of occasions when members of this panel have expressed the view that whilst compliance is one thing, our residents deserve better. They deserve better than just bald and bare compliance. They deserve something distinctive, something special, something that goes above and beyond. For major developments at a key entrance to a key service centre, is this too much to ask? Policy EE four, the Alsager Neighbourhood Plan, states that all new employment development must be of high quality design. Designs that you have before you might be high quality in the right context on an industrial park away from a major gateway. But in this context, I believe more is required. You've been asked to address appearance rather than massing, positioning and location. All these aspects are interlinked. Appearance cannot be considered in isolation. I very much agree with the view of the town council, that appearance must include position and height of the units. My appearance at this meeting very much depends on my position in relation to the screen. If I were to sit too further forward, my appearance would be distorted. If I sat too far away, you wouldn't get much idea of what I look like. And it's the same with the appearance of these units. They're directly opposite a residence and a hotel and a main gateway to our town. Appearance and scale are intimately linked. I stand by my comments, which are quite strong, quoted on page fifty six of your pack, that these units remain at an overbearing scale and form an unremitting wall of out of scale development. And that whatever efforts are made in terms of colour schemes and shading, the proposed units would remain featureless, windowless, and present a depressing frontage alongside the main approach into town. The applicant has given reasons why he believes a green wall would not be appropriate. Perhaps there could be other solutions, other forms of visual mitigation that just go beyond immature tree planting, which is what we presented with, which takes at least ten years to take effect. And the subtle credation of shades are essentially featureless boxes when all is said and done. We all accept that planning permission has been granted and the development must take place. However, given the visual impact of the scheme on such a prime location, I believe the people of Alsager deserve more than subtle colour variations and credations in cladding. We will have to live with the visual impact for many years to come. Thank you for the opportunity to state my views.
Thank you very much councillor Williams. Do any members have questions for councillor Williams? I'm taking that as a no. If anybody wishes to show their, I have one question councillor Williams. You clearly are not pleased with the materials and the design shown here. What would you be looking for in terms of, are you looking for brick or you just feel that the extent of cladding is over the top?
That's a very good question. But my comment is I would be more than happy with the, the solution in a different location. I know we're not supposed to talk about location, but it's the context. You know, they're not bad looking units if they were on an industrial park, not at a main entrance to town. So maybe some kind of brick facing, some anything other than just sort of the cladding that we've got with, you know, whatever the variation is. I don't believe it mitigates the visual impact. These are essentially great big boxes and we need to have something that mitigates that visual impact.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Farrell, you wish to speak?
Yes, thanks Chair. Councillor Williams, obviously in the representations on the agenda pack, I can see it's mentioned, there should be a living roof. And in the update pack, the applicant responded on notes on green walls. Do you think they're the same thing or different things?
That's a good question. There was, there has been discussion in the past about a living roof. I think that was something that was put forward. My recollection, maybe the applicant can confirm this, is that they, they had various reasons to be against that. I wouldn't just write a chapter on verse on that one. I'm more aware of the issues around the green wall. But there were a number of proposals or ideas that have been put forward in the past, including a living roof. And my recollection might stand to be corrected, is that the applicant wasn't, wasn't in favour of that.
Do you feel like a living roof would help the aesthetic of the, and blending of the buildings if that was to be implemented?
It would certainly improve the environmental aspect because, you know, in principle, I think, you know, living roofs are a good idea. Whether it were to sort of mitigate the visual impact, which is what we're talking about now, I'm not, I'm not convinced it would.
Okay, so thank you very much councillor Farrell. Are there any other questions before Sarah removes councillor Williams from the meeting? Thank you very much councillor Williams.
He's removed Chairman.
Thank you very much. I am now going to call town councillor Sue Hellywell, representing Alsager Town Council to address the board. Can I ask councillor Hellywell that you turn on your camera and microphone? You have two point five minutes speaking time. When you have finished, please can you switch off your camera and microphone? However, I will obviously allow questions from members if there are any. So councillor Hellywell, are you on?
Yes.
Right.
Chairman and councillors, thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Alsager Town Council. We object to this application on the following grounds. This application goes against policy EE four of the Alsager Neighbourhood Plan. EE four of the Alsager Neighbourhood Plan states all new development, employment development must be of high quality of design, which complements and enhances where appropriate the size, height, scale, mass, materials, layout, access and the density of existing adjoining development, and complies with the Cheshire East Design Guide. It should demonstrate highest sustainability environmental standards by utilizing buildings and landscaping techniques to create a low carbon or zero carbon buildings, rainwater capture, green roofs and a creation of wildlife habitats. It should provide an appropriate level of landscaping which complements and enhances the rural character of the local area. It would take, it would take at least ten years for any landscaping to take effect. Alsager Town Council would support a living wall. All materials used where possible should be recycled material. Bentley have become the first company in South Cheshire to install a living wall. Our wall in Alsager could also contain over two thousand six hundred plants. It can include up to twenty five species of ferns, grasses and evergreen, all grown locally in the UK and selected to ensure that walls thrive throughout the year. Each plant can be individually potted to reduce unnecessary water use. The installation should incorporate a special automated water system to ensure that the plants receive just the right amount of water, whatever the weather. A living wall will boost, boost diversity. It is useful to consider places for wildlife to roost and breed. When it comes to cleaning up the air we breathe, plants should be definitely be seen as our friends. If this application is approved, we request a condition that the developer and Cheshire East Council works with the town council on matters including the type of colour of cladding used in the constructions of the units. The town council has nominated three town councillors to sit on the panel. That will include residents and network rail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for councillor Hellywell? Councillor Farrell, is that your old previous question that I've got there? Can you just let me know, please? I've got, it says can I speak, but I'm not sure if that's an old one or a new one.
I think that's an old one Chairman, looking at the time.
Very much. Yeah, so, okay. That, that was for councillor Williams. Thank you very much councillor Farrell. I've seen that, that come in. There is, that does appear to be a slight delay with the message bar today. So thank you very much councillor Hellywell for your contribution.
Thank you.
Can you turn your camera and microphone off? You're welcome to continue to listen. There with me a moment. I'm trying to ride two computers at once, which is, I'm never very good. I'm now going to call town councillor Derek Huff, also representing Alsager Town Council. Councillor Huff, you two have the same two and a half minutes. When you have finished, can you please switch off your camera and microphone? Though please allow me the opportunity to ask members if there are any questions for you before you do so. So councillor Huff, can you please start your presentation?
Thank you. I agree in part with councillor Williams and with councillor Hellywell. But I will speak more in terms of the general application. We've heard from the officers that it's been to appeal once and that it's, everything's unkeyedory. No, the appeal, the appeal said it's substantially, the design was substantially. And then it go on to say, they would comply with parts, only parts of the Cheshire East and those parts for SE one and SE four, which need design solutions to achieve a sense of place. So we think that we still have the opportunity to say, and we agree with the appeal inspector, that there are improvements that could be made. It's only substantially and only in part compliant. Warehouses one or two are large and would dominate the area. We do not think that the current scheme fulfills the advice in the local plan regarding justification. And if you'll forgive me, I will quote this. The incorporation of green, the justification for this, the incorporation of green structures, notably trees and hedgerows, together with a sense, a sensitive design in terms of scale and massing of any new structures has the potential to mitigate any potential adverse impacts on visual amenity from the main public vantage points. This was also enhancing in the environments of the local area and improving the health and wellbeing of employees. Well, I'm sorry, in my days on the SPV, this did not do any of those things. It is equivalent to going to an art show to find they've got minimalist art and that's the only thing. They are boxes. Now, if, it's your decision on that. If you do approve it or consider approving it, then as councillor Hellywell has said, we should have some design features. We haven't got any. And this is the main access to Alsager from the motorway and from Crew. So we could design.
Yes, yeah, it's okay. Mister Huff, can you please, sorry councillor Huff, can you please finish up what you're about to say?
The design features could involve on the building itself, we've accepted, or the developer have accepted colouring and so on. But we could have some sort of art, welcoming people to the town. We could have a feature built into the landscape. And I plead it, do not accept that large warehouses built purely for cheapness and profit are a substitute for design.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Huff. Are there any questions to councillor Huff? In that case councillor Huff, thank you very much for joining the meeting. Can you please make sure that your microphone is now turned off? And we will continue with the meeting, though you are welcome to continue to listen to the remainder of the, remainder of the meeting.
I will put my telephone down.
Thank you very much. Can I now call upon Michael Unit as an objector to address the board, please? Mister Unit, can you turn your camera and microphone on, please?
Yeah. Thank you Chair.
Right. You now have, yeah, you now have three minutes to address the board, after which you may be asked some questions by board members. The three minutes starts now.
Thank you. I have a comment on behalf of the Crew Road Action Group and I have my own comments. Firstly, on behalf of the residents, the Crew Road Action Group, they have this concern, their biggest concern now is the parking situation in front of their homes. They would appreciate double yellows across the road and the ones in place on the corner of Crew Road extending to the front of their homes. They feel this is the least that could be done for them with the new traffic that will incur. Now on to my own comments. On the appearance, I do not believe enough has been done to have sensitive design to mitigate the impact of this development. With the exact scaling of units one and two, there's not sufficient buffering. This is taking five years to establish itself and ten years to grow to the full height of units one and two. Cheshire East Local Plan Policy LP twenty five, and I do apologise for stating it again, states that the incorporation of green infrastructure, notably trees and hedgerows, together with sensitive design in terms of the scale and massing of new structures, has the potential to mitigate any potential adverse impacts on the visual amenity from main public vantage points. Units one and two and the planned screening do not conform with this policy. More must be done to ensure that the appearance of this development benefits the local area and mitigates the imposing nature of this development. I'm disappointed that the developer has completely refused the idea of a living or green wall or something similar, or small sections of one. And I find it hard to believe that they've said that this will have no visual or environmental benefit. Architectural Natural Solutions Global, who specialize in this sort of architecture, states that living in green walls improve air quality, increase biodiversity, have the potential to increase commercial property value and enhance public areas, have a positive effect on the physical and mental wellbeing, help with sound buffering and in terms of aesthetics, can provide a stunning alternative to common building materials. Other developments have used living or green walls and locally, I know that Bentley have installed one at their site in Crew. As with the screen planting taking a full decade to have full effect, I believe that living or green walls should be looked at or some other solutions such as have been suggested, such as artwork, to improve the appearance of the buildings along with high quality cradling, cladding and other features. I also don't agree that these reserve matters being delegated to planning officers to approve. We have to get this right. Let's remember that while, yes, the outline planning permission has been approved on appeal, this development from the start has not been wanted by residents of Alsager, by the town council and has been twice refused by Cheshire East Council. Visitors to the town, the residents who look out of their homes will have to look at this imposing development and live with it for the foreseeable future. The least that can be done is that full consideration is given to the reserve matters and that more is done to improve the appearance and screening to mitigate the impact of this developer, development upon residents and on the entrance to our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will you stay there for a moment? Are there any questions to Mister Unit, please? I take that as a no. Thank you very much for your time, Mister Unit. Thank you. Right. And now we're going to call Andrew Williams. And now we're going to call Andrew Williamson of Walker Morris, representing the applicant, to address the board. Mr. Williamson, can you turn your microphone and camera on, if possible, please?
I have done that now. Is that working?
I'm hoping Sarah can, oh yes, because it says Andrew Baker. That's why I was confused.
Yeah, it is. I'm just in Mr. Baker's office using his laptop.
You have one and a half minutes of speaking time. I will then ask if there are any questions, after which I will ask you to turn your microphone and screen off, please.
Thank you very much.
One and a half minutes starts now.
Thank you, chair. As Mr. Evans advises, only the single reserve matter relating to appearance is for your decision today. The appeal decision does require the submission at this stage of information about ground level and trees, fauna and biodiversity, but this is for context and these conditions are not required to be discharged today. Statute defines what constitutes appearance. It does not cover the sighting or location of the buildings or their width, length or height, which were approved in the appeal decision as part of layout and scale. Appearance includes, and I'm reading from the Act, architecture, materials, decoration, lighting, colour and texture, but nothing else. You have before you comments from the town council, councillor Williams and 19 households, but most are not material considerations today. Comments like overbearing scale or insufficient buffer are simply not material. Only four representations raise issues relevant to appearance. Three seek a paler colour palette than shown on the submitted plans. The town council also raises a point about materials, but these are already prescribed in the brief. They also ask for further consultation on the choice of colour. A detailed design guide was approved in the appeal decision, and your officers confirmed its terms have been met in the proposals before you. And Miranda Bell, in a few seconds, will give you details in the other one and a half minutes of how those terms are being met. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hogman, you requested question?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, can you turn your screen back on because you'll need to answer?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Councillor Hogman, the floor is yours.
Yes. One of the previous speakers suggested it would be helpful if the applicants could meet up with local people, that's the town council, possibly, probably the borough councillors, interested parties and stakeholders, to discuss the particular design and the things they'd like to see. What's your response to that, please?
Well, yes, we, as Miranda Bell will explain in her one and a half minutes, yes, we are willing to talk about the colour palette, but the actual, many of the issues relating to design are actually prescribed within the design brief that we spent a lot of time at the appeal discussing. In fact, those speakers today, most of them, were at the appeal, and so whilst we're happy to talk about that final colour palette, there is little option to discuss anything further, because what is done fully complies with the design brief, as your officers advise you. So, yes, insofar as it's relevant to that final colour palette.
So you are prepared, or we're here again in a minute or two, applicant is prepared then to take on board or seriously take into consideration the, some suggestions and ideas from the people locally?
Yeah, we've already done five different alterations schemes. So in most, the three representations that are relevant seek a paler colour palette, and we can see that, and we've actually got, I'm looking at boards now, where we've done five other options, and we were happy to discuss that. We can see the relevance of that point, and we're happy to discuss that with yourselves and local people. But they're not before you at the moment?
No. No, I mean, frankly, I don't want to get involved in the great detail of that, but it would be useful to discuss them a bit more with the people local, the local people who have to live with the development, obviously.
It is important with respect that what the actual design brief says is profile metal walls will be installed. So the nature of the profile metal cladding is already prescribed in the brief, which the inspector says must be substantially complied with. I know councillor Hough, who was at the appeal, is suggesting that substantially complies with, but putting something like a green wall in or some fundamental alteration to the scale or width would simply be in breach of that condition.
So are you suggesting that then, it sounds to me like there's a very limited number of options on this palette that you're talking about, but presumably that is about decoration or cookie pop?
Yeah. Yeah, but at the moment, I'm just dealing with, I've read every single representation that's been made. People could have said they want to see different forms of decoration. I'm simply dealing with the evidence that's before you. Three make the point that they want to see a lighter palette, colour palette, and that's what we're responding to. We can't respond to sort of, you know, incoherent suggestions that it's somehow be made more decorative. At the end of the day, we're happy to talk to people, but we are addressing specifically the representations which are valid.
No, I don't know about valid. I think it's the representations that have been made. My question related to continued willingness to discuss these matters with residents, who after all will be much more concerned and anxious about the detail.
Absolutely, we are more than willing to discuss that.
I'll ask the same, similar sort of questions of the next speaker, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hogman. I have two more questions in the pipeline. One is from councillor Farrell, and secondly, from councillor Redstone. Councillor Farrell?
Thanks, Chair. Mr. Baker, just a couple of questions really. On the supplementary document, we've got some notes from the applicant, I don't know if that's made by yourself or someone else. One of the points, point two, says the use of climber planters on the foot of the wall will not readily adhere to the smooth metal cladding surface and are not recommended. Have you looked at any other, like, I'm not an expert on climbing plants, but I'm aware of different things that you can do to get around that. So in the instances of living walls, the instances of people using cables to have the plants attached to those or other solutions, have you looked at any other ways in which you can implement a living wall on smooth metal cladding? My second point also comes back to the notes made on the supplementary planning document, sorry, the update pack, sorry. The final point says there are no environmental or virtual benefits from the installation of green walls. I find that kind of a bold statement. Is that, have you got any evidence for that? Got any evidence for that statement? Or, and it also kind of contradicts the previous point where we're saying, sorry, yourself or the applicant is saying this will provide the same environmental benefits associated with green walls. So it's a kind of a contradiction there. If you could just clarify those points, maybe, please?
Yeah, well, the note was prepared by Pauline Randall rather than myself. Unfortunately, Pauline is not well this morning, today, and can't speak. She was originally going to be the second speaker. Unfortunately, she can't speak. I am familiar with green walls elsewhere. We've got one on an energy from waste plant in Leeds, but frankly, the nature of the structure, the inclination of the wall, they're very different to what's been approved as part of this case. The point that Pauline didn't make in her note is the fact, the point I made earlier, that the design brief that's been approved actually specifies profile metal walls will be installed. So, you know, that debate with respect is already prescribed within the terms of the brief, and as your officers say, the scheme before you meets the terms of the brief. I can't comment on whether there's, what the net or environmental visual benefit, I mean, the visual benefit point, I can, that's her opinion, and I can see what she's saying. The environmental benefit, I imagine that there are significant costs to maintaining green walls and green roofs. I've seen quite a lot fail. There's already a panel failing on the scheme I mentioned in Leeds. So whether or not there is a net overall benefit, I don't know, but that was made. Pauline Randall was the expert witness at the appeal, and I've no reason to doubt her expertise in that matter, but I'm a lawyer, not an environmental expert.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Redstone, please.
I think your last comment actually explained something to me. I would have thought that your client would have put an architect on as their representative rather than a lawyer. So is this all about money?
That's a bit insulting. I've been a planning lawyer for 40 years, and I certainly don't listen to what my clients tell me. I end up telling them what to do, not the other way around. So the idea that lawyers are somehow just paid, the reason why I'm here is because most of the representations that are being made in the letters are actually not material considerations to your decision today, and that is a...